Before we start off, it's with a sad heart that I acknowledge the passing of Camille Anthony, a former member of this board and all around great person. I've asked Ben Tafoya, colleague and friend of Camille's for many years, to say a few words to honor her, after which I'd like to have a moment of silence. Ben?
Thank you, Chairman, members of the board. It's an honor and privilege for me to say a few words about my friend and colleague, Camille Anthony. Camille exemplified service to the community. As we look back across the 375 years of the town of Reading, we will see few records such as this. Camille served 20 years as a town meeting member, 12 years as a member of the Conservation Commission, and 18 years as a member of this board. Ponder that for a moment, what sort of commitment it took on her part and that of her family to fulfill this commitment to the town. Megan introduced Camille when she won the Citizen of the Year Award from the Chamber in 2015, and used these words to describe her work: "community, wisdom, passion for making a difference, voice of reason, gracious chair, determination, and patience." It shows, as you know, beyond just showing up on Tuesday nights. Her tenure in town government yielded long-lasting significant initiatives, including development of the town dump to what we know now as Walker's Brook Drive, the downtown development project, conversion of Reading's water supply to the MWRA, development of the former Edison Leslie property, and work on the rather aggressive I-95, I-93 interchange proposal for which she spent two years going to community commission meetings. Even after her retirement from the board, she was still active in helping the town through work with the Economic Development Committee and Human Rights Advisory Committee. Two things stand out for me during our time working together. One, Camille spoke to everyone. If there was a problem that needed fixing, people would let Camille know, and she'd work with the town manager or the board to get a project underway or the issue resolved. She was a big believer of getting the board into the field to look at problems and hear people's voices. Second, some issues she never let go of. And to the Lord, to this day, whenever someone anywhere talks about speed enforcement, I still hear Camille's voice talking to then-Chief Cormier about what we were doing to increase traffic enforcement in Reading, meaning citations. But it wasn't only the visible civic life that was Camille. She was great at bringing people together at the human level. It's the dinner for fellow board members, town manager, and the assistant town manager and their spouses, just because, the cooking show that she did with her friend Gene that everyone wanted to be on, and volunteering for a number of years to run the big auction fundraiser for the Unitarian Universalist Church, and spending a few years singing with the Reading community singers. On Mr. Walking the Dog Up Our Street, which was a time to chat, Camille made a difference like few before in the life of this town, and I deeply appreciate the opportunity to share the memories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Thank you, Ben. And now for a brief moment of silence in honor of Camille. Thank you. And thank you once again, Ben.
You're welcome.
So this evening, we will start with the board, select board reports, and the town manager reports as reflected in the agenda, followed by a public comment, general public comment. Unless one of us has a topic that's been not anticipated 48 hours in advance of the meeting, we will move on to a discussion of the items listed that are listed in the agenda. These include, we're starting off with approval of minutes, as we discussed in the last meeting. We're here to appoint the town accountant, discuss a change in ownership at Anthony's co-fired pizza. Then we're going to have three public hearings, one to reduce the speed limit along Havrell Street, the second one to amend select board policies, and the third one to set stormwater sewer rates. Prior to the last hearing, which is on setting stormwater sewer rates, we're going to have a discussion about the option of having a second water meter, which Barry will lead. And then finally, I'm pleased to say that we will be appointing some members to the ad hoc committee on human rights, and that will be led by Barry and Vanessa. So without further ado, let's move on to liaison reports, and I think we'll start with Dan this time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Ben, before you go, I just wanted to thank you for your eloquent words. You were in at the end of Camille's terms. I was in at the very beginning in 1994. She was a wonderful person. She was back in the air when nobody knew what anybody's politics were outside of the town, and I hope we get back to that someday. But she was just an awesome person, here for the town in so many ways, and she'll be missed dearly. And thank you for your words. And in addition, Mr. Chair, I'm pleased to announce that we're about to kick off the final subcommittee. They're working me like a dog this month.
Yes, we're going to get as much out of you as possible.
I'm willing to do it. This is the Subcommittee to Set up a Process for the Annual Setting of Town Meeting/Town Manager Goals of the Timetable, and also to look at the current review form and process, and maybe put some structure around that and look at a different type of form. We'll be meeting Thursday evening. I've already set some draft ideas, new address to Bob, so we'll kick those around then. I anticipate we'll be able to wrap this up next Wednesday in another subcommittee meeting, and bring our preliminary findings to the board on the 26th. So we won't have the opportunity to have a public hearing this month, but when you folks are ready with Section 1.4, at whatever point in the future, you can bring that and this new material, which will be part of 1.3. So we'll commend that to your care afterwards. That's all I got.
Dan, stand. Barry?
Thank you. I also wanted to say just one really quick thing about Camille. Camille Anthony is probably the number-one reason why I'm actually sitting in this chair right now. She was relentless in encouraging me to run, and encouragement in the kind of Don Corleone kind of way, which is, you need to run, you need to run. And finally, when the seat came open, she was the first person that I called. So she was compassionate, and she was generous with her time and her advice and her friendship and her loyalty, so I thank her as well. So does everybody know where they were six years ago today? Okay.
Probably running for election.
We hired our new town manager, Bob, which was six years ago.
Only six years.
I know, it seems like six years. So just wanted to let everybody know that. Now that you're on a new contract, we hope you don't leave. So a couple of things really quickly. At the last, right after our last meeting, we had ZBA actually formally voted the Eaton Lakeview project. We are now officially, when those projects get built, at our 10% affordable housing mandate. I think this whole town, the staff and this board deserve a huge round of applause, because we're one of the few towns that have actually met that mandate. And what that means for us is that, you know, for the next few years till the census gets done, we can control the pace and the depth of our own development, instead of having to respond to what other people think are appropriate for Reading. We can figure it out ourselves. So with that project, we're in good stead.
Can I ask you a question about that?
Sure.
When is the safe harbor period actually up? I thought it was pretty soon.
It's actually, it's really up, but now that we've gotten this project approved, we can now apply for another safe harbor with belts and suspenders. The state has to actually certify all of that, but, you know, we've now gone well above and beyond all that. So, you know, until we do the new census, which is by the time 2023, so maybe we have three, four years to kind of take a breath. And if someone wants to come in with a 40B, we can say, you're welcome, but you're not doing 100 units, you're doing 20. So that's a great, you know, it's a great thing for us that we can concentrate our efforts elsewhere. Onto sort of somewhat a similar topic. Tomorrow night is the Wakefield ZBA, which is now taking up, it's been delayed quite a bit as the developer has kind of gone back to the drawing board, and they're ready to present, to present new plans tomorrow at the ZBA. And I know there's a lot of people in Reading that are interested in that, especially the people at Summit Towers and Gazebo. But they are moving forward, and basically what they've done, where they're going to present, I don't, there's no renderings yet, but they're going to go from five stories to four in the two buildings at front Hopkins Street. There's also going to be a transition one-story clubhouse in front of the building, on Building One, which they're proposing, and the new plans call for a reduction of 15 units. So just to remind everybody, that was 190, and now they're proposing 175. So that's going to be presented to the ZBA. I'm sure they will have, they'll have something to say about that, but that's tomorrow. Also, CPTC has met, and they're, they're working on some design guidelines, which I think is really important, design guidelines in the 40R district. Remember, that's where basically alliance share by downtown development are going to occur. And so essentially what they're looking at are sort of how, you know, sort of master guideline, you know, design guidelines for that district, and sort of how to protect residential users and manage parking for new developments. They're also discussing sort of a transitional area, that part of the 40R that kind of is at the edges and on the border, that might have sort of single-family houses or two-family houses around there to make sure that that development is more in scale and less dense than it is maybe sort of toward the middle. They're looking at some onsite parking plan for residential units and offsite parking for the commercial employee customer, because remember, there's going to be some retail there as well. And, you know, just trying to find a balance between protecting residential structures within the neighborhood without overly restricting development. So that's kind of what they're working on. I know that there's a lot of interest in that, especially this high-density development going on in that, in that small area. So CPTC is, is working on that, and they're just kind of plowing through and creating language on that. And then the last thing I wanted to just sort of comment on, I had mentioned this, I guess in an earlier liaison report, that resident Teresa Wiggins, who runs Village Parenting, is running these free workshops to help parents talk about inclusion with their children. And there are three this week that are coming up. One is tomorrow, I think at the library, Thursday at the high school, and Tuesday, the 19th, at Kellum. Those people who are interested to go, to go look at Village Parenting on Facebook or website and get the dates and times, that's a really great resource, especially as we're dealing with some of the issues here in town. It's going to really help parents talk to their kids, who basically from young kids to even high school kids, about how, how to basically talk about these issues, about inclusion and about, you know, hate and all that. So really, shout out to her. She's doing this free of charge, and it's a great resource to the town. So that's all I have.
John?
I actually have quite a number of liaison reports that'll be in my next meeting, because I got a bunch of meetings coming up. However, there was one thing that I think I'd just like to raise it here. It's not on our agenda, but, you know, it kind of struck me that we have heard now from three of our rather long-term convenience stores relative to some, some interest. They realize that at the moment, we don't have a beer and wine license for them, however, they also realize that every single town that surrounds us does let their convenience stores, you know, compete in that arena. And they have asked for us to give some consideration. I think that, I don't know where that's going to go, but I think it's a long and winding road, I think, isn't it, Bob? As far as...
And during my report, I actually have a PowerPoint.
Oh, okay, good. So great, I'm glad.
I haven't suffered through it.
I just, I thought since we've all, you know, kind of heard over the course of the last two weeks from several longstanding businesses, we need to pay attention to them and see what we can do in that regard. The other thing I would like to say, and I'm, I'm glad we had the opportunity to have a moment to reflect on Camille Anthony's work here in town. It has been legendary, and that's the truth. Ben pointed that out. I can tell you that I was a regular customer here for 10 years before I became a selectman, doing a lot of work on, especially with youth groups and recreational. The one thing I was always struck with, with Camille Anthony is, she had that same wonderful smile when she said yes or no. And I actually really enjoyed that about her. And I can recall, as I was, as I was getting ready to be seated as a selectman, I happened to have run into her at breakfast at Christopher's, which was a place I would run into her from time to time. And she said, well, finally, you've made it official. Took you long enough. I mean, so I do have to say that I have a lot of respect for people that make those kinds of commitments over that period of time, and I think it's something that's really important to reflect on. She wasn't urging me, Barry. I can tell you that. But I think that she appreciated the fact that different opinions come together, and that's what makes our town something special. So I just want to say goodbye and good luck to Camille Anthony, who I think did wonderful things for this town.
Vanessa?
So I also knew Camille. She was one of the people that encouraged me to run.
Surrounded by encouragements.
Camille lives on.
And I had a very deep and profound respect for her opinion on town issues, so she will be missed. For liaison reports, the Recreation Committee survey for Birch Meadow came in. The big takeaways there are that there is a desire for walking paths, bathrooms, and they've also expressed an interest in a Sunday, an earlier start time on Sundays. Right now, the select board policy is that it, play on town fields begins at noon. However, communities, our teams also play and start earlier in the day. So similar to your comment, John, about possibly bringing this up for further discussion, this might be something we can put on a future agenda to discuss a little bit more in detail. We have a vacancy for the custodian of soldier and sailor graves. My understanding is that there's someone who was interested in this, but Bob, correct me if I'm wrong, but we've had a hard time confirming.
Yep, yep. I've had some discussions with Bill about this.
Yeah, I, yeah, so...
Got to get him in here.
If, if the gentleman is watching, please do come in. We would very much love to appoint you. If there's someone else that is interested, please do let us know.
Thank you, Vanessa. Well, I, I too now have to feel I need to say a little story about Camille. She loved to laugh, and, and she was enthusiastic. And the first thing I remember most vividly in my mind about Camille is when I decided to run for the select board. You have to understand, I'm also a state worker, and she very publicly came charging at me waving a check to a state employee, which is, you know, all kinds of bad for a number of reasons. So I said, don't give me the check for, you know, Camille, and she, we had a good laugh over that. But no, she was truly a great person. I'd like to echo John's statement. We got some requests about the convenience stores. I forwarded along to Bob, and I look forward to his presentation on that tonight. I'm the liaison to Reading 375. That is, that very large committee of volunteers that are working hard to make sure we have a great celebration of our 375th anniversary here in Reading. And so I'd like to give some updates to keep that effort in the public eye. They report that they have had an extremely successful trivia night fundraiser on Friday, and they'd like to thank everyone who came out in support. They'd also like to ask you to please consider supporting Reading 375 by buying an anniversary pin for $3.75 that are available at RCTV Studios, Whitlam Books, and the Reading Co-op. They also have 375 t-shirts, which are available for $20 at Reading Shirt and Trophy and RCTV Studios. They would like me to encourage you, and I encourage you to go like them on Facebook and stay up to date on what's being planned, and that anyone who would like to see all of the events that are going to be going on, and there are a lot of them during this two, two-week celebration, is to go to just reading375.com, and all the events will be up there. So I encourage you to all do that. Lastly, Bob reminded me that I need to nominate someone to represent the board to update town meeting on the RMLD instructional motion that we received. Dan will no longer be available at that time, as he is not running for reelection, and so I nominate Vanessa Alvarado to represent the board on this matter. I do so because I think she's the obvious choice. She's our other co-leazon to RMLD, and is Dan's, comes with Dan's recommendation for the task. So I just want to make sure that this is consistent with the will of the board. Fine. Do you need a motion? I don't think so.
Okay, thank you. Notting of heads is enough.
Yeah, nodding of heads is fine. So, Bob?
Hey, Chair. I'll just stick to the one issue, and it's, for some of you, it'll be memory lane, for some of you, it'll be new. It's nothing like Reading. So we had a special town meeting, we actually had two special town meetings within the November town meeting, just two and a half years ago. And one of them is because basically we had no idea what we were doing with alcohol licenses, and if we had determined that, as the select board policy on licenses was being reviewed. So we learned some things. In 1970, the town had voted against Question A, and there was some background in that. But the secretary did not put it on the ballot a third time, which was required by law. There is evidence the town did some more work, but again, there's no evidence that the state followed up. So that we effectively had illegal alcohol licenses for 30 or 40 years, technically. And we thought, maybe we need to fix this and protect the businesses that had them. So Reading is very unique in the Commonwealth. We have liquor licenses that were accomplished in a very different way than anyone else. So the answer to can we do beer and wine licenses is actually complicated. This question was most recently put in front of a town meeting not long ago, in 2005, 13, 14 years ago, and a beer and wine lost. But just to advise you, the process to go, to allow beer and wine sales is going to require a vote of this board, it's going to require a vote at town meeting, it's going to require a home rule petition through the legislature, and then a vote on the ballot at a local election. So for instance, if our objective is next April, it's time to start next month. So that's, that's the long and short of that answer and why it's so complicated.
Thanks, Bob. That's pretty clear.
Yeah.
So timely this is now.
Yeah, really, yeah.
All right. Well, yes.
As a point of clarification, what are the next steps? Should we, as a board, choose to move forward with this? Do we add to our agenda, talk about it at future meetings? So what are next steps?
You certainly need to have a discussion at the board level, whether you want to have a public heating, a public hearing and formally advertise. I'm not sure whether you need to do that yet. You will eventually. It really, you need to first kind of suss out the feelings of the board. If the board is unanimous or strongly in one direction, that's indication. If you're not, you need to have more conversation until you get there. At some point, probably late spring, early summer, you're going to, you know, involve town council, probably hopefully, and go through a formal process at the board level before going through the rest. We've been two different paths with other home rule petitions. Sometimes you go to a town meeting first, sometimes you go second. I'm not sure in this one what's the best case. But if you're aiming for April of next year, a home rule petition generally works better in late fall than in early spring, because the legislature just goes to recess. So whether they would do it at the same time as November town meeting or just before is really hard to know. When we did this in November, we did a special in early November, and the legislature got it right after that, and they, they knew about it in advance and they passed it.
Yeah, they moved it right through.
But home rule petitions submitted in November need a lot of preparatory work, because that's not the best time to submit something, usually September is. So I would suggest a future agenda item where the board members just have a conversation with their feelings are, and depending on how strongly the board feels in one direction, we can determine how to go.
I think that sounds good. Barry?
Just a quick question. So that process would be the same regardless of whether we did things right in 1970 or not? So this is not...
Would have been much different if...
So this is a result of something that 40 years ago, we didn't do something correctly?
Yes, and when we found the problem, we could have chosen a six-year solution to it that would have been a more normal solution that other towns would have used, but our feeling for the, you know, holders of the licenses, that was a huge business risk, to be holding an illegal license for effectively five or six years. If their insurance companies ever found out, anything ever happened, it was not a good risk. So we chose the fast solution, which did complicate any future action.
So that means going forward, we're always going to have this...
We're always going to have a home rule petition to change.
We want to change by increase.
Right.
Yes.
So we're going to have an opportunity to discuss this at the end of the meeting, when we discuss our next agenda. Okay, so now to the public comment part of the meeting. If you'd like to speak, please state your name and address. Please direct your comments to the chair. As a reminder, please keep your comments to items that fall under this board's authority. Campaign-related comments of any kind will not be allowed. I'd like to get a feel for how many people would like to speak in public comment, so I know whether to limit the time or not. So two, three, four, five, six.
Yeah. Do you want to ask if this is about a hearing, one of the hearings?
Yeah, if, we're going to, during the hearings of Havrell Street, select board policies, and water and sewer rates, you'll have the opportunity to speak on those then. So then. So this is an opportunity to speak to the board about other issues. So a quick show of hands on how many people have something to say now. Two. Okay, okay. Bill, you had your hand up first.
Excuse us, apologies. On Vanessa and Dan's remarks about the custodian sailor graves, they must be a veteran, and they must be a resident of Reading. And I assure you, Americans, we'll get up with what we have on our...
Thank you. Thank you. Nancy?
Nancy, I actually wanted to comment on the request that was made in your package to grant liquor licenses to convenience stores and gas stations. Folks don't actually stock their liquor cabinets from these places. So the sales are very specific, and data shows that overwhelmingly, they're single beers, or also called road sodas. The third highest selling item in convenience stores after tobacco and fast food, according to research, is beer. In tonight's package, you had a very interesting letter from the National Civic League that implored you to focus on your residents' health. The first paragraph, they cited that 70% of personal health is due to behavior and environment, not genetics. A number of studies have found that in and near neighborhoods where there's a high density of places that sell alcohol, there's a higher rate of violence. Even when levels of poverty, age, and ethnic background of the residents are taken into account, a high density of alcohol is strongly related to violence regardless of the neighbors or neighborhood... account, a high density of outfits is strongly related to violence regardless of the neighborhood's ethnic makeup, age, or economic status. The density of alcoholic outfits have also been found to be related to, obviously, other alcohol-related problems such as drinking and driving, higher rates of motor vehicle-related pedestrian injuries, child abuse, and the like. I completely understand why these stores are looking to expand their sales base, but I'm asking you at what cost to public safety and to public health? And I will be very curious to see how Rikasa weighs in on this, and Deputy Chief Clark. The second part of my comment is just a follow-up upon a question I had last select board meeting. If you could please clarify if Deputy Clark's salary was adjusted when you took over as the chief? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Any other comment? Okay, seeing none. We will jump into the minutes of the last, that are in your packet for February 13th. It was the joint meeting with the school committee, as all of you recall. Let's start with Dan. Do you have any comments on the minutes?
Yeah, I actually came into that meeting late. Did the meeting start at 6:00? I came in about 6:30, so the minute should probably just note that. It was somewhere in the middle of the second candidate's comments.
Yeah.
The lady that was applying. Yeah, Jean, I think her name was.
Thanks.
Put them anywhere you want. Mr. Engemeyer came in. That's all I have.
Barry?
No, I'm good.
John?
I'm good.
Vanessa?
What's up?
I had a typo that I showed to Caitlin. It's just a question of tense, you know?
Can you put it all back?
Yeah. It's on page, I'm going to scroll down to the page, 6A2. Mr. Friedman asks if Ms. Healy, blah, 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 blah. She has also face, it needs a D. That's it.
Move that the board accept the meetings on February 13, 2018.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Okay, the next agenda item is to appoint the town accountant. Per the charter, this board is required to appoint a town accountant. Bob will provide us with a few remarks on this appointment, I hope.
I think it's a good idea.
Yes.
March, you didn't even show up.
And we will, the board will then discuss and vote.
Yeah, the charter requires you to do it in March, effective July 1st through June 30th. That's why you're opposed with this tonight. And obviously, I think you should appoint her.
Yeah. Do we have a motion?
I have a motion. Move that the board appoint Sharon Antrim as town accountant for a term expiring June 30, 2020, consistent with the requirements of Reading Home Rule Charter, Article 6.3.
Second.
Discussion?
She's terrific.
Excellent. Hire her back.
I think she's been fantastic, especially in presentations. She's very professional and answers questions in a way that we can all understand.
Thank you.
So, any further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Zero. You tell her to come in tomorrow.
Yeah, exactly. Mr. Chairman, can we get some of those chairs out? We've got a lot of people standing. I mean, there's a lot of chairs.
There's some chairs.
There's some vacancies up front.
A few vacancies up front.
We don't buy, you can sit in the front row.
It gets long in here sometimes. You might not want to be standing.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
Could you ask what hearing they're here for? Because we might want to take that out of order.
Ah, yeah, good idea.
Oh, we can't do that, I'm sorry.
You can give agenda items, like Anthony's.
Delay that.
Yeah.
Should have known that.
So moving along.
In the third iteration, we'll remember.
Right now, we're going to discuss a change in the ownership of Anthony's Cold Fire Pizza. For this item, there'll be a brief presentation by Bob, and we'll vote to approve the change of ownership, and I believe this is necessary because they have a liquor license?
Yes, correct. It'll be a very brief presentation. I told their attorney there was no need to come. This is purely a routine paperwork issue, as the board sees from time to time. The police have done a background check, and it came back fine, so there's no hesitation or issues on the town side to change this paperwork.
Thanks, Tom.
I have a motion.
Motion?
Move that the board approve the change of beneficial interest for an annual all-alcohol liquor license at Anthony's Cold Fire Pizza at 48 Walker Drive, as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor? So I just want to make sure, the first hearing, reduce speed limit, is scheduled for 7:30. And we're good.
You're good.
We're good on that. So we can, so we're now going to embark on three public hearings, and each hearing will follow the same six-step format. So just to set expectations. The first, number one, the secretary of the board, Vanessa, will read the public hearing announcement that's required. A speaker will give a presentation of the topic. You see the first speaker flying up. Board members may ask questions of the speakers that they might have. At that point, we open it up to the public to make comments and ask questions. The board will then end the hearing.
Yeah.
Or vote to end the hearing, or the board could also continue it at our next meeting, continue the hearing at our next meeting. Once the hearing is closed, the board will deliberate the topic and decide whether or not to adopt the document or the action that's proposed. Or that, too, may be postponed to another meeting. So that's a six-step process. So the first one is a hearing on lowering the speed limits along Haverhill Street, and Vanessa will read the legal notice.
Please take notice that the select board of the town of Reading will hold a series of public hearings on March 12, 2019, in the Select Board's Meeting Room, 16 Lowell Street, Reading, Mass. One, to reduce the speed limit on Haverhill Street, starting at 7:30 p.m. Two, to amend, well, stop there. All right.
Okay. So now it's over to Deputy Chief Clark for presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wanted to thank everybody that showed up here. I know there's a lot of residents on Havel Street that I can see. For those who don't know me, my name is David Clark. I'm the deputy chief of police here in the police department. With me, Lieutenant Christine Amidola, who's my support services division commander, and traffic and safety officer, Michael Scouton. We had asked the board to entertain an idea of dropping the speed limit on Havel Street based on a lot of concerns raised by the residents, amount of crashes that have been happening on Havel Street, and we've done a lot of data, research, speed traps, greater traffic enforcement, sign boards, we've collected a lot of data that we print to the board, and we feel that the safest thing to do on Havel Street would be to lower the speed to 30 on that street. And so we're going to do a presentation so everybody has some of the actual factual data, and that's what we'd like to present now. So I'm going to have Traffic Safety Officer Scouton take over.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So we're just circling back. This is the same presentation that was put out on the 26th of February. So I'm just going to kind of go through the, just again, introduction. Havel Street public square within the town of Reading starts at the state line, 129 Rotary, proceeds all the way north into North Reading. It's Havel Street right. Havel Street, this is, this went to the article within the traffic rules, special regulations that are in the traffic rule regulations now. We're trying to, trying to make the speed limits basically all the same across the So these are the enforcements that we've done in the past year. So from January 1, 2018, to December 1, 2018, we had 195 traffic enforcements, leading up to 50, 150 hours of actual enforcement on the roadway. Just within, when I did the study, when I started the study in November 1st to December 1st, we had 52 enforcements, leading to 1,500 hours. Basically, an enforcement is a 30-hour, excuse me, 30-minute block that an officer will go do on the roadway. And each officer does two of those blocks within his eight-hour patrol period. So these are, this is, within January 1, December 1, 2018, 252 citations were issued on Havel Street, consisting of warning civil, criminal, and also leading tourists. This is the major concern, one of the most major concerns we're looking at. A three-year yield, 11-115 to 11-118, 97 crashes on Havel Street. Forty-three rear ends, 12 car to deer, 12 car versus dog, 24 single-vehicle crashes, tree, and old call signs, et cetera. Eight taking a left off of Havel Street onto Franklin, two versus motorcycle, four failed yield, and two head-ons. It's a pretty big number. Areas of concern, Havel Street at the Rotary and Havel Street of Franklin Street. These are the two of the biggest areas on Havel Street. Those are the biggest concerns we have. 27% of the total crashes, 14.5% of the total crashes, leading up to 43 crashes, which 41.75%. Getting close to 50% because of those two areas.
And we did, one of the parts of things we've asked for with the select board to consider is looking at a study to see if a traffic light at Franklin and Havel would help with traffic flow and help with the accidents as well. So we're asking for, does a study be done, not necessarily put the light in yet, but a study be done to see if that would have any impact on Havel Street or Franklin Street at all?
So basically, leading in, Havel Street's been a force, different areas of the speed changes on Havel Street. So here, down to the bottom of the Rotary, leads north, this is Timmerneck Drive. So within this section of roadway, it's 40 miles per hour. We're looking to bring this down to 30 miles per hour. This right here, this is the data within that section. This is the average vehicles per day on that roadway, and this is just heading north.
We can't read any of that. Can you call us?
Oh, 6,028 vehicles on average, daily.
For what time?
So that's 24 hours. That's basically, that study was from 12:11 to 12:17. Trailers were out there for 24 hours. So this data was collected over that span, and this is an average of vehicles, and this is just heading northbound, 6,000 vehicles.
Wow.
So that's just the Timmerneck? This is within the section, this is in the 40 mile an hour section, from the Rotary to Timmerneck Drive. What I had to do is, this is a 40 mile an hour speed limit in here, I had to put the trailers within each section, because each section has different speeds. So I had to take data from each section, and I had that broken down.
It might be a little bit easier for you. Excuse me. Where it says compliant, I'm not sure I really understand that.
Yep, I broke it down already, yes. So compliant vehicles, with over 6,000 vehicles, 5,073 compliant vehicles.
What does that mean? They pulled over?
No, they're within the speed limit.
Oh.
They're going forward or below.
Low risk, 941, medium risk, 13, and then high risk, which is over 20 miles an hour, the speed limit would be over 60. It would be zero. So 81%. This number right here, you want to see close to 85%. This is actually not too bad. You want to see this 15% under for complete, you know, compliant driving, because not everybody's going to be going exactly 40 miles an hour. 41, 42, those would fall into the low risk.
One other question, if I may.
Sure.
Of the 192, you know, shot, is that only in the evening? Because I mean, I do notice on Havel Street, I don't see the lights going by me and right up in the audience, they're just pulling somebody over.
That's what, in all shifts.
How many of those were trucks?
I'm sorry, I have to make a point of order. I got swept up in your conversation. This is just the presentation portion, and then the board will ask questions, and then we'll have the public hearing where the public can ask questions. I apologize.
Okay, so here's the second portion. We have Timmerneck Drive, just past Stonewell, section of the roadway. This is 35. So after you come off the Rotary, you hit Timmerneck Drive, it breaks down to 35 miles an hour. So within this section of roadway, there's a school, there's the hockey rink. So this section of roadway at 35 miles an hour, inside here, it's a 20 mile an hour zone. So people are going from 40 miles an hour, dropping to 35, and potentially down to 20 in this section of roadway. So we're looking to bring this down to 30 miles an hour as well. We're looking for some consistency over the roadway. Numbers, data, 5,000 vehicles over the span of, this was out there from 1110 to 129, so this was out there for almost a month. 5,000 vehicles on average, 5,228 vehicles. So I broke it down again, this section, so compliant vehicles, 37, 3752, 1462, low risk, medium risk, 13, and a high risk of 1 in that section of roadway. So this town is moving pretty quick. These numbers, this is a high of concern. Just like I said, this top number should be around 85%, and these numbers should be 15 and below for a compliant roadway. And this is within that school section of roadway. So here's the third section. Just after Stonewell Road, you go from a 35 mile an hour section to a 40 mile an hour section. This area spans from just past Stonewell Road up to just before Franklin Street. Again, similar numbers, over 5,000 vehicles on average. So these are, this one's a little bit more compliant. This area is not as bad. This is the 40 mile an hour section here. Compliant vehicles, 4620, 742, medium risk only 7. So these are the kind of the numbers that we're looking for. Unfortunately, we don't have that throughout the whole roadway. So this is the final, let's get, oh, this is, this is the, this is the third. We're back. Yeah, you can go to the next slide.
No, this is showing the south.
Right. So this is the same section of 35 mile an hour road going southbound, 6495 for vehicles on that roadway.
And you can see the difference.
This is a major concern right here. These vehicles are all going southbound. Compliant vehicles, 42, low risk, 2180, medium risk, 53, and high risk, 2. 65.6%. This number is not, this is a terrible number. It's a very, very low number for this area, 34% on compliant vehicles in this area.
And that's going towards the Rotary?
This is going towards the Rotary.
Okay.
And again, this is just a snapshot of time. This is, we just did a block, this is a snapshot of time.
So final section of roadway, just before Franklin Street, back to the North Reading line, this area is a 35 mile an hour section. Biggest concern in this area, the deputy mentioned the traffic light. Traffic light at Franklin and Havel, we're suggesting a traffic light there. There's been a lot of accidents in that area. We do not put out yield signs, stop signs, traffic lights to slow traffic down. What we're looking for is safety, and we're looking for getting people through the intersection with ease. You know, we're trying to get people out onto the roadway. Cars are queuing up here, onto Franklin Street, you're getting one power engine out, one power engine out, and then taking off onto Havel Street. And vehicles coming up here 40 miles an hour, and if they're not slowing down, it makes it very difficult for these vehicles to get out there. There is a right ramp, a little area here that they can peel off and go southbound, but because these cars are queuing up, they can't get into that area to go southbound onto Havel Street. What we're trying to do is, we're trying to upgrade that intersection for a light there and just make it more compliant to the intersection, and make it much safer.
In a good comparison to that, for those who live in Reading, I want you to think of Woburn Street and West Street. West Street is very similar to Havel Street. It runs from the Woburn Line to the Wilmington Line, that's a 30 there. Woburn Street comes from the... Woburn Street comes to the downtown, it ends at West Street. Very similar to Franklin Street. Similar amount of traffic, a lot of cut-through traffic. So if you think about a traffic light at Hable or Franklin, you consider the traffic light at Woburn and West as an example, and that has significantly cut down an access in that location.
And what Officer Scott was talking about with 85%, the state would like to see, we know not everybody's going to obey the speed limit, but what you hope to is get everyone at least 85% of compliance, but without traffic crashes. So here you have a location that has a lot of single-vehicle crashes, we had 24 in three years, that's huge. That shows that speed is probably definitely a factor for single-vehicle crashes.
So just a conclusion here, Hable Street at the Rotary, there's been a lot of rear-end accidents. We can lower the speeds, that area is maintained by the state, there's not much we can really do with the Rotary itself. But Hable Street and Franklin Street, upgrading that intersection, hopefully will make the intersection much safer and much easier for vehicles to travel within that intersection. It's easier to get eight to 10 cars over with a green light than to have one or two cars edging out and trying to get out onto the roadway. It makes it very difficult in that intersection. We've monitored that area, the traffic enforcement, it's a tough intersection. So.
Is that it?
That's it, Mr. Chegget.
Excellent presentation. I open to the board for questions. Dan?
I have two questions. Are you going to keep the 20 mile an hour segment there or unkill in this plan? You're not raising that to 30?
No. The school zone would maintain the 20. Our biggest concern is the rapid changes in speed, especially heading southbound to 40, 35, to 20, back up to, it's, we think that's too much.
And what's your requirement for posting speed limit signs? Is that covered by the thickly settled rule? Are you going to post that every couple hundred yards, 30, 30, 30?
I think with the change, we should post it, at least for a while. I know that.
How many signs are you going to put up?
We probably just replace each sign that's right there right now, so that's probably a quarter to five, 10.
If it's approved, we'd obviously then put the sign boards out there notifying everybody warning speed limits dropped. We do a lot of advertisement, like we talked about before. We'll hit the area very hard with traffic enforcement. Hitting the area hard with traffic enforcement does not mean writing everybody tickets.
Right.
It's education, slowing people down, being visible, and then start enforcement down the road from there.
Good, thank you.
Thank you. Very.
Thank you, also a great presentation. I guess I was really surprised for a road that's maybe from the Rotary to the North Redding Line, maybe a couple of miles long.
Four or five.
Two miles.
Oh, you took?
It's about two miles. That there's so many different speed limits along that short period of time, that, you know, once you see a sign, you just assume that that's going to be the speed limit. So if you see 40, even though maybe a half a mile later it says 30, in your mind, you still think it's 40. So, you know, you're not, probably not in compliance. So I'm really, I think the consistency, you know, pick a number, I think 30 is a good number, but pick a number and have it be consistent along that hallway, obviously with the exception of the school zone where you want people to slow down. The other part of it, I think 30 being a good number, is that when, I think you said in your last presentation, that people coming from North Redding to go into Redding on Hable Street, they're at 35, that's their speed limit?
Yes.
So, and at that point, they were going to be able to go to 40. So in some ways, now we want the people in North Redding to slow down, right, when they come into Redding. So I think that that's a, that's a good thing, and I would support just sort of that consistent 30 mile an hour. And the other thing too, which I would encourage, and I hope people support, is that traffic light on Franklin and Hable. I know it's really difficult for cars to kind of inch out if they're going left or right on that. I'm a bicyclist, try doing it on a light, you know, where you don't have that momentum. So there are times where I just have to sit there and wait till there's nobody there. So I know that cars are zooming back and forth and that, so the idea of that, I'd like to see what that study indicates, because I think it might be a really good place for a light, so, but, so thank you.
Any questions for the?
I just have one.
Officer Sean.
Yeah. So 30 is the number.
That's what we're recommending.
Yeah. North Redding's got 35.
Correct.
I don't know that there's a magic to the number, but I'm guessing you guys probably chose 30 for a reason.
I think we're, if you look at, when you cross into North Redding, you look at how much more sparse it is up in North Redding, I think the 35, it's a straight, very straight shot there, I think it makes more sense for them. Us, we have the windier part of the road, and we have a lot more houses and parks and other things on that stretch.
Okay.
That's why I think the 30 just makes more sense to really just slow everything down inconsistency throughout.
I just bring it up, not because I think it's a bad number or a good number, I just, I thought there was some method to the, you know, to the suggestion, and I think, you know, people like to know.
They do the windiness and the amount of houses and everything on that road, that's why I think the 30.
Yeah.
If you go up to the North Redding, you can see it's a lot more woods and a lot more spread out.
So you've got school, you've got a daycare center there, you've got the church, you've got the church, you've got the in and out of the hockey rink, I mean, there's a lot going on on that road.
Of course.
And I know that some of the people in this room have experienced the streets they live on, off of Hable is cut-through streets as well. So, I mean, there's a lot going on in a lot of places, I do know that, because I live on that side of town, and I'm up and down that street myself, so.
Officer Scott. I'm sorry?
Officer Scott had a question. I just had a quick comment.
Yes.
Just to circle back to the speeds and the thought process behind that. Both roadways heading towards that school zone is 40 miles an hour. So at Timbukne Drive, and also just before Charles Street, heading into that, so you're doing 40 to 35 to a potentially 20 mile an hour zone on both ends of that.
Right.
So, there's a good comment made about the inconsistency, that's really what we're looking for, we're just looking for a consistent roadway, people staying at one speed, not realizing that they're doing 35, now they're up to 40, now it's now back to 35, and wow, now I'm in a 20 mile an hour school zone.
Yep.
So that's kind of, just trying to make that a little more consistent.
Makes sense. I mean, it's very logical.
I had a resident, resident in during our office hour, half hour, which is really half an hour, and she asked if there were any alternatives to a street light there. Maybe making the turning, you know, when you come up in Franklin to enter Hable, is there any way to put in some lanes that would break the left turn? People trying to take a left turn, trying to take a right turn, I understand that's already in place some month, but is there any way that you can do that to allow the traffic not to back up on Franklin so much without a street light?
Honestly, with the property lines there, I don't even know, I'd have to default the engineering there, the experts on that, not us.
Okay.
And I think they have to take a look at it and do some data for us. I don't know if we could even with the property lines there.
Yep.
Secondly, it's, the concern still is that people edging out regardless, even people coming out of Franklin Street with left-hand turn lanes, now they have to deal with two potential lanes heading northbound, one trying to turn left, one going straight, trying to take a left out there.
Yeah.
Just my opinion, and just my opinion, I think that would make the intersection worse.
Yes.
And that's just my opinion, because now they're looking at two lanes and one lane coming southbound, I think that actually might cause more accidents, but that's what we're hoping the study would show.
But the traffic study will come up with all different types of recommendations based on wait times and safety. So that's what we'd hope to see.
Great.
They can come up with all different types of solutions.
Okay. I just wanted to ask on behalf of the resident, thank you very much. Any other questions from the board? Okay, so now we move into the, oh.
Public comment.
Yeah, the public comment period. Could I ask for a show of hands of the number of people who would like to speak on this issue? Okay, so in the interest of time, I'm going to ask you to keep your comments to two minutes and under, which is actually a lot of time, if you speak for two minutes. And I'll ask the secretary, Vanessa, who's our secretary, to keep a clock and yell at me when the two times, the two-minute time is approaching. I'd also ask you to keep your comments, state your name, your address, and also remind people to keep comments from getting personal. So no, you address the board, don't start a crosstalk, cross discussion in the audience. So with that, I'll open up the public comment, public hearing. Yes?
Yannick Mokevich, 26 Batchell Road. Just an idea, I grew up in Linfield, and there's Main Street and Lowell Street.
Mm-hmm.
Put a four-way stop in, and it's been working for over 20 years, something maybe to think about. The three-way stop makes you stop, and then you have to do courtesy, where whoever hit the intersection first gets to go next. It's a lot cheaper than a light, probably a lot more, something easy to put in and even try before you put a light in. But I drove up and down the street this week, coming from my house, going to the highway, there's only two postings for speed limit the whole way that I could find. On the way back, there was two for 35 and two for 20, and one for 40 closer to my street, so. I don't like 40, I don't like 30, 35, it's in the middle of the road, and it's monitored, and people take their time, and be a little more courteous, a three-way stop, maybe a stop side of Wakefield Street, because that's pretty crazy there, people just kind of feel that they can go out, that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much. And officers, feel free to answer questions that you'd like to.
Thank you, Mr. Chegget.
Just hearing.
Part of the study would actually, what they recommend is, is they might make is a three-way stop stop, or widen the road, or a traffic light. That's why we're asking for the study to consider to actually have the experts tell us what they think would work best.
I understand.
But I do appreciate it.
I don't see it hiding in the road there, though.
That's just, but that's what we, it's one of the things, that's what the study would show.
Thank you.
Next, yes, in the back.
David Ryan, 209 Hable Street. So my concern is that the number of, the number of speed limit signs is not enough, if you're going to change that, and that your 85% target will actually drop if you do not have better education. I know you talked about doing sort of education things. I think the signs like on West Street to tell you what your speed limit is and what you're actually going would be a good solution for Hable Street, and I would ask that to be part of the study.
Yeah, the electric one we can look at, but we would like, put a lot more speed limit signs in throughout the road itself, both north and southbound. So it's quite clear what the speed limit is.
Thank you. Next question, in the middle, in the back, yep.
Kristen Koppas, 113 Timbukne Drive. First, I want to thank the board for addressing this, I know it's been a concern that we've raised before. I live at the corner of Timbukne and Hable, and maybe, and I noticed some of the numbers on the southbound side, there's that curb, there's a pretty big curb when you're pulling out of Timbukne Drive, and the speed limit is 35, 40. Maybe this will be addressed if the speed limit is lowered to 30, but you have to hold your breath and go, because you can't see the cars coming from the left, and they're coming quickly. So if the 30 mile an hour speed limit kind of resolves that, I think that's great. I know no one wants to spend money on more traffic lights, but I often, I kind of suggested maybe a blinking light or something, kind of how they have on Salem and Pearl, I think that's Salem. But that, you can't see the cars, they're coming quickly, especially during the rush hour morning, evening commutes. And then I'm a huge proponent of the 30 mile an hour, at least from the Rotary to Timbukne Drive, but I know we want to be consistent, because cars are flying off of the highway, coming straight down Hable Street, and they're cutting through Wakefield and Timbukne, and they're not lowering their speeds. So not only is Hable a concern for me, but so is my street, is a side street, and these people are just cutting through. I know that the traffic enforcement has been out there, and so I think if the speed limit is reduced, that we do need to keep up the enforcement on all of those streets. But I do want to thank you for being there, because I have noticed an increased presence.
And we can bring up the yellow light idea or something, or we can have at our next PTTF meeting, the Parking Transportation Task Force meeting, and also the listeners can discuss if there's anything we could help down in that area.
And I know there have been some accidents at that intersection too, both single and multiple vehicles, so.
I do appreciate the feedback, and I can guarantee you that the traffic enforcement is going to stay, and we're going to increase on some of the side streets to see, has it had any effect on the side streets as well. So this is part of a longer land process.
And I did know, I think you know that Vanessa and John, the rush hour period is so much worse. When I'm working from home, we get very minimal traffic on that street, but it's at night when people are in the mornings, they're just coming through so much quickly. So that's just my observation.
If you're going to email Traffic Officer Scouting the exact time he's looking for, then we always do the selective enforcement, the traffic enforcement, based on residents' concerns.
Okay.
So we'll adjust those times based on your concerns. If you can email him, he will then put it out, and we'll sign the officers there.
Okay.
And we definitely will, thank you.
I can just make a quick comment on that, and I know you're on Timbukne Drive. Major concern is not just Hable Street, it's all the streets. So lowering the speed limit, the thought process behind that is hopefully going to help every street on Hable Street, people getting out onto the roadway. Now someone's not doing 40 or over 40 miles an hour, they're lowering the speeds down to a better sightline, hopefully the cars are slower, and you can, you know, get out onto the roadway safer that way.
I'm glad you brought up John Vanessa's name. We have liaisons to different entities in town, and they are our liaisons for safety. So they would be the appropriate people to help you in those cases. And likewise with other boards and committees, look for liaison assignments and use those liaisons. Okay, next question, yes?
Yeah, Noel Fantasy, 626 Hable Street, studying proposed light. Is that going to be, is that study going to happen after the speed limit's been dropped, or are we going to do it before?
Yeah, no, it depends on the vote tonight, and the speed study would come later.
Yes, in blue, and then I'll get over here.
Rose Harry Markey, 47 Batchell Road. I like your idea about the stop signs, I think that's better than a light. I live on the other side of that traffic light, so anybody on that other side of the Timbukne won't feel the repercussions of that light, and I think the traffic is just going to back up down there, and it's going to be just a huge inconvenience trying to get out and off my street onto Hable, because I have a light backing me up. I don't feel that's the solution, but I do agree with lowering the speed limit.
Figure out, again, there would be just a study to see with that impact at all, and the study would tell us if that would actually cause a negative impact or positive impact. And that's why we're not actually saying the light should go in, we're asking for the study for it.
Over here.
Yeah, two parts. One is, I appreciate the traffic study, it was an eye-opener for me to see what your results. And I guess I was thinking that, like, in front of my house, I live.
Your name and.
Oh, I'm sorry, my name is John Sullivan.
Thank you.
I live at 556 Hable Street.
Thank you.
And the, the traffic in front of, going past my house, I live on the corner of Granger, extends way down there, we're already running down to find out, it's beyond Stonewell Drive there. And it's moving, couple of miles an hour, you know, it's a traffic jam, I guess officially. And when you put a set of lights in there, you know, safer as it will be, and I certainly agree with that, it's going to back it up more. And at some point, some undefinable point, people will say, "The heck with this," and they're going up Granger, or they're going up Rustic, or they're going up Charles, they're like nature, they will find a way that's like 23 seconds faster, and they will time it, and that's what will happen, you know? And so I, you know, it's exhilarating. The other thing is, to me, I joke with my neighbors, I don't live on Hable Street anymore, I live on Heavy Trucking Boulevard. And nothing but 22-wheel gravel trucks, caravans, if I use that word, it's so popular today, of cement trucks, and they're rolling. I mean, you can't tell me that they're not speeding. You know, some of them I think are overloaded. If you could stand down there at the corner of Franklin, where they all seem to come down Franklin, some reason they don't come down from North Redding off 62, they only come down here, they go through five sets of lights just for the privilege of driving down that little narrow east end of Franklin Street. And just so they can, what, I don't know what it does, I mean, you can tell me, you know, it doesn't make any sense to me.
We've done two heavy truck exclusion studies on Franklin Street, they haven't met the state requirement. You have to have at least 5% of your traffic to be heavy trucks, and they're not getting there, they're only up like 2%.
The other thing is.
I'm sorry, we have to move on to the next question, trying to keep it.
You're probably kidding.
No, no, I mean, the, yeah, I'm not kidding, unfortunately. Yes?
Brian O'Meara, 12 Batchell Road. Thank you for this. This is eye-opening, because I knew that, I know the speed limit changes up and down, but I really didn't even know where until you, until you spelled it out tonight. I'm all in favor of the speed limit being uniform all the way down. I'm more in favor of 35 than 30, but whatever is safe. But agreed with the other Batchell residents. I couldn't be more against a light at Franklin and Hable, and I know safety is the concern through that we're doing the study, I'm excited to hear that it'll offer multiple solutions, possibly, but the volume, I mean, I'm blown away by the volume of vehicles on that road, I never dreamed it was that high. If you take that volume and then put a light there at Franklin and Hable, I'm really concerned about the backup that that's going to create, so I'm eager to hear what the studies, I'm glad we're taking this in stages, not saying we're going to do all this at once, possibly lower the speed limit, then take a look at the light, but let's see what impact, if we lower the speed limit, what impact that has, and then move on toward the light, but I'm eager to see what the study says, but I would be completely against the light that, especially with that volume of traffic, I feel like that's going to create a ton of congestion.
Steve Patterson, five seventy-two Hable Street, the volume, it's in a vacuum, so six thousand cars a day, how does that compare to West Street, how does that compare to Lubrin Street, how does that compare to Main Street?
Main Street has about twenty thousand cars a day. I do not know West Street most recently.
So six thousand cars a day in one direction, so you're looking at almost twelve thousand cars daily, heading north and south. Salem Street is close to fifteen thousand vehicles a day, and Main Street, as it says, upwards of twenty thousand vehicles daily.
So you're talking about, at least as far as we can tell, the third busiest street?
It seems the third or fourth busiest, yeah.
Okay, so significant amount of traffic. And I guess the second question is, is a process-related question. Where do we go from here? I think that most people who live around that area are in favor of a uniform speed limit, and whatever it may be, but a uniform one. Well, what's the process? You guys vote on it, and then it's approved, and then we move forward with the traffic study?
Yes.
And then implementation, if you approve it, is it immediate, or next week, two months, I always think that actually make it happen?
Yes, Bob.
Need to put up signs.
Yeah.
Depends how long it snows.
But that's what we're talking about, that's in the way.
It's imminent, imminent is the answer, I think.
What we can do is, in advance, we could probably put the speed limit, the speed board signs out, notifying everybody of the upcoming, such a date, the speed we're changing over to thirty, if it's thirty, and we can let people know that we can put those signs out throughout the street, educate, social media postings and everything, let people be aware of that.
I will be watching here.
Thank you. Yes, sir, and then you, and then you.
I just told them my name.
I'm sorry, could you say your name?
Tell me. Help me out of drive.
I sympathize there with you, sir.
Were you pointing, were you pointing at me, or?
I was, and could you repeat your name, because I was talking over you.
Sure, Tim Perkopio, five five three Hable Street. Just wondering, is it possible to reduce the size of the vehicles on Hable Street as they do in Saugus, the Felsway, and other surrounding towns, of making the, having the bigger vehicles have to take Main Street as opposed to, I just, the trucks themselves are scary and they're going fast, and I'll say that with your study, as far as your speed, I'm going to say that in the morning, they're going a lot faster than coming home at night, to their likes of coming home to and earning food, and I don't know which way it's going, but I just, I know what it is.
Yeah, fair question, and also similar to your question there.
See, you'd have to do a state traffic study, they have to be over five percent, but you also have to sign alternate routes for these trucks, and so, but that doesn't get them to your house when you want a furniture delivery, or when you want something, so unfortunately, honestly, it's the hardest traffic enforcement for the police department, because trucks are a lot to go down there, even if there's an exclusion, if they have business in the area. So we would also have to get with North Reading, find a whole new truck route, so it's a big deal to make a heavy truck exclusion. It's a state law, it's not even our law, and it's very hard to enforce.
Yeah, but if we're talking about safety, I don't think that there would be anything that we want to grow.
We haven't found any significant safety problems with the heavy trucks, not-
Well, if you're at my mailbox, you have to suck your stomach in sometimes, to get your mail.
But just keep in mind, that's up to the state, so we'd have to do a whole other study on that, a whole other presentation, have them adopt it, and then again, with it's not just, okay, it's a truck exclusion, then they have to designate alternate routes and everything else, so it's actually a bigger thing, I'm not saying it can't be done, I'm not saying we're not listening to your safety concerns, but it's a lot bigger process than the select board voting on lowering the speed limit.
Yes, Bill.
I believe the post office department is on that street, and they have the right to go, any street they wish. They even have the right to walk Hable Street when the post office say they're on the way.
Yeah, there are a lot of exceptions, the post office is one of them, the T is one of them, all the DPWs are, there are a lot of exceptions for trucks.
And I agree.
Yeah, we hope so.
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Chuck Marshall, five sixty-five Hable Street, and I'm just here to support the lowering of the speed limit, I'd like to thank the police department and the selectmen for considering it. We've been on Hable Street as the apex between Franklin and Granger, on the northbound side, and we're near to the Perkopio, getting out of our driveway in the morning is literally impossible at times, as is getting out of the driveway at night when people are coming home. When the traffic enforcement signs were down by just past Granger, on the southbound side, walking down that street, there was cars going fifty-eight to sixty-two miles an hour. I don't think that at any point in time, a lot of the cars are going any more than forty, they're speeding, flying by the house. And Tim is right, you try to get your mail on that street, it's almost been hit three times, we've had cars end up in our front yard three or four times, tracks over our lawn, crashes on both sides of that street, right by Granger, it's a, it's a, it's a safety hazard and a detriment to the people that live there.
Thank you, thank you.
There's a woman on the middle, and now if you can see her.
Yes, you, that's great, we're starting.
Hi, Melissa Thomas, I live at one eight hundred Hable Street. I really appreciate the study, and it's been very eye-opening for me, I've been, I'm in big support of the thirty mile an hour limit for Hable Street, it's really great. The numbers are really, I also agree with the signage, we don't have very good signage on the street. My street, in front of my house, is where the thirty-five miles an hour limit sign, I also have the added benefit of being a blind driveway, so that's a lot of cars and a lot of people that are not in the compliance of that zone, and I'm assuming there's going to be some adjustment period at the beginning, and I'm at the higher speed limit, and with the blind driveway, I really, really appreciate a blind driveway sign, and I agree with a street speed limit sign, and unfortunately, I just wanted to say again, this is the third time I've said that, as one of these communities, I really, really, they just really want one of those signs just to help us.
If you could email Officer Scouten with that request, that'd be great.
I have, just because I get a lot of people raring me, you know, not raring me, but riding my, you know, car in the middle of the night, or at nighttime when I'm trying to drive home, or get into my driveway, or getting out is really a nightmare, as well as my dog was hit by one of those trucks that drives on Hable Street, and this was one of the two accidents that were reported. I'll email you again, Officer Scouten.
So once we start putting out the new signage, and talk to the DPW, and get all the new signage out there, and we figure out what we're going to put in, I'll talk with them about that.
No.
And then they can order it, bring it together.
Perfect. I'll have it there.
Thank you, and yes.
Kristen Swartz, two forty Hable Street, thank you for the study, it's really eye-opening how many vehicles go down the street. I just want to mention that the southbound, the area that you were trying to run from Timberneck to Franklin, that's the sidewalk, and that is where the biggest traffic violations were, that's where all the children walk to school, and in the morning, they are flying down the road. And I think, you know, during the day, there's not much traffic, but when everyone's walking to and from school, it can be really terrifying, so here, the vehicles flying past us, so just to keep that in mind, and with that said, I am definitely in favor of lowering to thirty, because there are a lot of children on the street, or lots of them, so, thank you.
Thank you, yes, and then.
Good evening, my name is Sean Glenn over at three eighty-seven Hable Street. So our driveway, which we share with two other properties, is directly across from the end of Charles Street, the Hill at the Felsway, and just before our driveway, as you're going northbound, there's an S-turn there between Timothy and Dove Driveway. We've had two accidents there, when our kids have been crossing the street at the cross water, which is after a driveway, and it's because the first car stops, which is usually after about ten or twelve cars are right behind us, but the first car stops, and the second car doesn't have time coming around that bend to stop. So I'm teaching my kids, wait until the second, third car's behind, stop, because I don't know what's going to happen. And the same thing as what my neighbor says, we're watching each direction, and when you go, you commit to going out of your driveway, getting across the street, so my kids right now are thirteen and twelve, and not, I'm very worried about teaching their friends who become the new drivers how to get in and out of our driveway.
Yeah.
So I support the study and the lowering of the speed limit.
Thank you, thank you, yes.
Noel Fantasy, six two six Hable Street, just a clarifying question on the study, so if the speed limit gets lowered, you're going to collect new data, see what that is, and then commission a study, is that accurate?
Yeah, the last I heard is the study wouldn't be till the fall, at least, by the engineering, I don't know, if you want to speak about it.
So how much data will we have, if they only need six months for the data, is that enough, or perhaps it's even less than six months for the data?
No, they don't do that long, it would probably be, the engineering department's usually, what, a thirty-day study about?
No, and sorry, you're asking between when we lower the speed limit, and when we do the second traffic light.
What I'm saying is, I mean, you lower the speed limit, we don't post signs until late spring, early summer, or whenever the snow melts, I mean, is five or six months enough time to let people adjust their behavior before you can take a new sample and see what the numbers look like?
Yes, I feel it's more than enough time, because we'll hit it hard and heavy with the enforcement and everything to make sure we have enough active data for them.
Other questions? Any, who, anyone who hasn't spoken yet? Okay, any quick, oh, yes.
Yeah, I was wondering, will we, will we get information as to what comes out of this meeting, and when the next meeting will be, and how will we be informed?
Yes, at the, if you stay for our deliberation, we may vote on this, and so you'll find out tonight, if that occurs, and then, the, I think they've explained how this will be implemented.
Yes.
And then the police officers have also explained well how they would do the traffic light study, if the board approves it, yeah.
Just one second, other question? Do you may vote?
Oh, we will. Yeah, I mean, technically, someone could move the question or something, but I don't think that's going to happen tonight, we're going to vote, yeah. Bob.
If I might, Mr. Chair, just ask the residents, how did you find out about the meeting, and what's the best way a person communicated?
My neighbor just-
My neighbor?
Yeah.
Who's the neighbor, raising it?
Do you want to have a point person?
All right, say this person's name and address.
Perkopio.
Okay, very, very apt.
I think mailing, I think mailing or emailing or texting would be fine, you know, any, any way that, any way that you could do it.
I'm still set up with the town.
Yep.
I notice this, so it's pretty easy.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Vanessa.
Bob, for changes like this, do we ever have, I mean, we have clearly a good selection from the neighbors here, is it, do we compile an email list, that then a blast goes out to when the change takes effect, or something like that, so that, clearly, these are intimate people, so I don't know how it's happened in the past.
Typically, in the past, one or two neighbors have taken that on, and formed their own email groups.
Yeah, yeah.
It's more reliable, honestly. We also use, social media was used pretty extensively in this, did you end up using Code Red?
I believe Jane Miller used Code Red, that would have been the town notifying the residents, we'd asked her to target, because you can target a specific area, we asked you to target us, did the town mostly everybody?
All right, there you go.
Did you opt in?
You opted in for Code Red, have you signed up for it?
I'd sign up.
Not that I know of.
Okay.
That's the first I've heard of it.
It's a system the town uses, you have to opt into it, you put your number, your phone numbers in, and when the town's sending a message, is we can target a certain area, if there's emergencies, we can-
You go on the police website to get that?
The town.
Town.
The thing to say is, a man missing, and you've got to look, okay, yeah, we get them.
We get those calls usually, but we didn't get it, but this meeting.
It depends on if you signed up for, or maybe it was just an emergency?
Some people sign up for emergencies only, some are signed up for all notifications, so without that, you might want to add that check, let's see what you signed up for.
Yes, I know, I know.
It'd be easier than this.
Yes.
Jim Taylor, five forty-one Hable Street, I'm going to play the role of captain obvious to state that the most effective enforcement of the speed limit on Hable Street is when the presence of police.
Yes.
Especially from six to nine AM and four to seven PM. Second question, as part of the study, the traffic light study that you're going to do, which will include possibly putting a traffic light instead at Charles and Hable Street. Two reasons, or actually one reason, it's very difficult to get out of Charles Street on Hable Street to go northbound. Anytime of day, it's even worse now with instructions coming out at that intersection, but, because what you end up doing is you come down to Charles Street, and you stop, and you've got to look, you've got to straight right to see cars coming around the corner from Charles Street.
Does that make sense to take a look at that in a PTF meeting, or?
Yeah, we can bring it up on the next Parking Traffic Station Task Force meeting, yes, and then see, talk to them, looking for a study for that.
Okay, so looking to, we have two more public hearings that we need to get through this evening, any other quick questions? Yes.
Okay, I have a question, maybe for the opposite. My name is Dan Lane, four nineteen Hable Street, I guess, is there any thought or data that suggests that by lowering the speed limit, might there be less volume of traffic on Hable Street as a result?
There's no way to know in that, we're basically just lowering the speeds, as I stated earlier, hopefully it assists some of the side roads, get more of a consistent speed, and just have everybody, you know, more compliant driving on the roadway, hopefully less crash, and that's what kind of led us to also Franklin-Hable was the crash data, and trying to pinpoint these really troubled areas.
We don't have any comparisons in town that we've lowered to see if that has impacted that.
It would be an interesting follow-up.
Yeah, and we can definitely do another speed study with the month, see if the numbers go down.
Andrew, Mr. Chair, is there a question?
Yeah, I know, yeah, okay, sorry, had a little conference there.
Very quick, I promise.
Yes.
Has there been any consideration for additional crosswalks? I was just reminded of my issue with the children going to school, and I just wanted to put that out there, sufficient crosswalks on Hable Street.
There's no crosswalks on Hable Street.
There are, there are enough.
Enough, around the school.
Yeah, especially some of the side streets.
Yeah, okay, over here.
Quickly, can we email you for a copy of this presentation, would that be made available?
Sure.
Can we put it on the website?
The town manager can field this one.
Yes.
Yes.
I think probably ought to post it up on social media as well, a lot of people look there.
Okay. All right, I just had a brief chat with the town manager, and if you all, it's great to see such interest in this process, and if you find it beneficial to, when you, when this is over and you step outside, to create a point person or two, just so we make sure, you know, we try to reach you in a number of different ways, but it's not, it's not totally foolproof, and so you might want to consider that, okay? So I'd like to, is there a motion to end the-
Move that the board close the hearing regarding the speed limit change on Hable Street.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, on favor?
I think you got a, I'm sorry.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Move that the board approve amendment two thousand and nineteen dash one to the town of Redding, traffic and parking regulations, reducing the speed limit on the entire length of Hable Street as presented. As a point of clarification, the motion here is to decrease the speed limit to thirty miles an hour for the entire length of the road.
Except for the school zone.
Except for the school zone.
Second.
Second, okay.
Is there a second?
Yeah.
Yeah, they were buried, second. Discussion.
So one thing I would like to say relative to staying in touch, Kristen has emailed myself and Vanessa a couple of times, actually, and it's well known, we work, the two of us, it's our responsibility to work closely over there, so if you want to isolate us with the, you know, if you put together a little committee, kind of an email chain, and you want to, you know, maybe on your way out, exchange those names and so forth, and then stay in touch with us, and everything we get, you'll get. It is posted, you know, all the, like, tonight was posted, but believe me, not everybody wants to climb through the morass of government, I get that, sometimes if we can make that a little easier for you, that's part of why we subdivide ourselves a little bit, so you[1789.32] that's part of why we subdivide ourselves a little bit, so you shouldn't hesitate, as Kristen has in the past, to email us, because it gets results, you know? I mean, it works when you do that, so. You know, my discussion on this is, I think this is, you know, we need to have consistency. They've done a great study. They've justified, I think, where they're, what they want to get done now, and what they want to look at in the future. I think we just need to get moving on, so.
Vanessa?
There were numerous neighbors that commented on the 35 mile per hour potential limit. As also, I want to recognize those. I'm in favor of 30 mile per hour. It's what the police has recommended, and given the other concerns as far as pedestrians, driveways, I think 30 mile per hour is the way to go. But I did want to recognize those that wanted the limit a little bit higher.
Yeah, also.
Barry?
Yeah, part of the reason why I think 30 is the right number is because even when you're doing great, you're only getting 85% compliance. So if you have 35, that means there's a lot of people going 40 and 45. If you're getting 85% compliance and you're at 30, well, maybe they're going 35. 35's safer than 40 or 45. So for that reason, I'm going to support the 30.
Anyone else? I'd like to first thank the officers who came in tonight and did a great presentation, and I really appreciate you answering the residents so directly, on the spot, so to say, so to speak. I support the, the, this, this 30 mile an hour speed limit with the 20 mile an hour in the school, in the school zone. I think my only comment is what I he, what I've heard that most concerns me of all is, is that people's flying through a school zone at over, you know, over 20 miles an hour. I would hate for us to see,
Move it outside, please.
(laughing). as we all would, a kid get hit and hurt or worse. So, you know, I, I know you do the Thank you, thank, thank.
Mr. Sergeant-at-Arms, thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you.
Some of my agenda disappeared.
best you can, you're stretched thin, but that really angers, angers me to hear that, So, I'd like to ask the board if it's okay. We have staff here for the water sewer and I hope that we are aggressive with those drivers. Any other comment? Okay, hearing and storm rates discussion. We, we'd like to get that done this evening. So if, if it's okay with the board, I would like to take that out of order because it's already none. All in favor? 5-0. 8:45.
Thank you, everybody. Gotcha.
So we, we can start, okay. A second?
I want to thank all the residents for coming out this week.
Two minutes?
Who's second?
All in favor?
I'll read the hearing.
Yes, yes, two-minute break. Please.
Please take notice that the select board of the town of Rudding will hold a series of public hearings on March 12, 2019, in the select board's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Rudding, Mass, to approve water, sewer, and stormwater rates for fiscal year '20, beginning at 8:45 p.m.
Actually, we're supposed to have a discussion on second water meter.
Well, why don't we just let them go?
Okay, that's fine.
Go his way.
Yeah. Okay. Bob, take it away.
Thank you again for doing this in March. The last several years, boards have done this, and this allows Fincom to tomorrow night to see a rate, and, you know, probably importantly, come meet when they're rolling on things that are standard, so that's helpful. This is the standard presentation I've done for several years. I'll go at a bit of a quick pace, but please slow me down.
Yeah.
There's five elements that determine rates. Other factors are generally minor. The other four can be largely important or, or less important. The first two, we have some control over the cost of the crisis, the MWRAs assessment of user reserves. You have control over the end of your account.
Bob, could I ask you just a quick question before you head down this trail? I know that we had intended to have a short discussion about second water meters. Would that discussion have an impact on our decision about rates?
Yes, it would, and to jump to that now, just make a couple of comments. I think it's in the best interest of everyone if you're going to change your second water meter that you give some lead time, so that the summer would be too fast.
Bob, just pick up a little bit, move this mic behind you, please.
Okay, sorry, Bob.
Sorry.
I thought you were doing that.
No, definitely. Thank you. So, we can certainly discuss second water meters during the presentation or after. As a practical matter, you are now setting, you're being asked to set rates starting next December. So starting a second water meter policy next winter, December, whatever it is, would be reasonable and appropriate. If you do it in the middle of a year that way, then the impact on rates is less, and whatever I show you tonight can be dealt with. If you were to say you wanted to start them tomorrow, we'd really have to do some math to see if the current rates this year would support that change.
That's, I'm just asking that question because there's been enough that's come our way that we really have to talk about it, and if it was a decision to go in one direction other than the one we're in, I just was wondering what the impact would be to this rate.
Yeah, and real simply put, the amount of money we need to collect on sewer won't change when you add a second water meter if you do. But the relationship between the first water meter and the sewer charges we need to make would change.
Right, yeah.
And in some ways, we're going to have to estimate what that is because we don't know.
Well, I'm asking that because in, in looking at the material you've sent out to us in advance, it was pretty clear that we may be experiencing some increases.
Yes.
And if that's the case, the whole second water meter thing begs a certain question because those increases will have to be calibrated to match the fact that a certain amount of second water meters wouldn't be, wouldn't be taxed that way. I mean, you know, it's kind of, you know, you pay for what you use is the idea behind a second water meter, but there's, the, the financial implications are not small. I get that. So I, I don't want this to get lost in the shuffle again, I guess is what.
We are going to have a little bit of a discussion on this.
We will have a discussion on this. I, I want to get the feeling of the board. I think implementing a two-meter change now is impractical.
Midstream is really what you're talking about if you do it now. I get that.
Yeah, midstream being a nice analogy.
Is that what we're saying?
I would much prefer you to implement it in a year from now, or, you know, effectively next spring, a year from now.
To take it to effect then in December of the, of the.
You know, you may, you may want to get more information to finally make a decision as opposed to making that tonight. I don't know. I will tell you that when we last did peer analysis, I want to say four or five years ago, most communities have a second water meter, but many charge a higher rate for the second water meter, which in my mind.
Different water rate.
Yeah, it kind of defeats the purpose of making the change.
Higher, but not, not as high as the combined rate?
Probably true, yes. So, there's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, I get it.
So let's, if we could.
Yeah, I just needed to clarify that.
We will have that discussion, absolutely.
There's no real coupling at this point, I tell you.
I wouldn't say so, no doubt.
And so, so Bob, please continue.
Okay. So for FY '20, again, I mentioned there's a couple of things we have some control over that's in green. Water, the local costs, as Fincom will see tomorrow night, is just over 3%. Debt capital is very modest next year, just for one year. And the MWRAs assessments were just updated a couple of weeks ago, and they're not too bad, at 3.3. So the water budget, not great, so budget is up just over 2%, which is one of the lower ones in recent years. By contrast, the sewer budget is up eight over 8%. Our wage costs in sewer are higher because we're actually transferring one worker from water to sewer because of demand.
I was going to ask what that difference was.
So the wages are a little lower in water and a little higher in sewer for that reason. You can see it's a big jump in capital and debt in sewer, and I'm going to talk a lot more about that. And sewer is the area that's under more financial pressure from the MWRA. And as I'll show you also, the MWRAs assessment is much more impactful on the total sewer costs because it's a much bigger percent of the fund.
Is that why our sewer charges are always more than our water charges?
Yeah, and will always remain there, I think, for the foreseeable future. This talks about the economic development. There's another slight upward adjustment this year, which will save almost a percent on rates. Last year was a bigger jump. It saved 3% or 4% on rates. This year, it's a mi, a minor jump. And there's still a lot more development queued up, if you will, so this pattern could continue for a couple more years.
So, yeah, just, is it okay if we interrupt you with these questions as you go along? Because I have a question on this too. Barry?
Yes, so, thank you. So, obviously, if we're developing more, we're selling more water, which is great, but does it add to our, is that net gain, or is that, I mean, the infrastructure's there, right? So.
Right.
You know, we're not adding, or are we?
It adds, it adds an MWRA cost on a lagged basis. They charge us based on, is it last year's use? Sewer is three-year average, water is just one year. So if suddenly you grew a lot, it's like the Vogts School. You're paying, you know, tuition on last year's enrollment. We're paying on last year's usage for one year. The second year, you'd be paying on the current usage. But most, most.
I'd like to, given the hour and the fact that, and the fact that... Thank you, thank, thank.
Mr. Sergeant at Arms, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Some of my agenda disappeared.
So, I'd like to ask the board if it's okay, we have staff here for the water sewer and storm rates discussion. We, we'd like to get that done this evening, so if, if it's okay with the board, I would like to take that out of order because it's already 8:45. So, we can start, okay. A second? All in favor?
I'll read the hearing.
You please.
Please take notice that the Select Board of the Town of Rudding will hold a series of public hearings on March 12, 2019, in the Select Board's meeting room, 16 Lowell Street, Rudding, Mass., to approve water sewer and storm water rates for fiscal year '20, beginning at 8:45 PM.
Actually, we're supposed to have a discussion on second water meter.
Well, why don't we just let them go?
Okay, that's fine.
Go your way.
Okay, Bob, take it away.
Thank you again for doing this in March. The last several years, boards have done this, and this allows FinCom to tomorrow night to see a rate, and, you know, probably importantly, town meeting when they're voting on things that are standard. So, that's helpful. This is the standard presentation I've done for several years. I'll go at a bit of a quick pace, but please slow me down. There's five elements that determine rates. Other factors are generally minor. The other four can be largely important or less important. First two, we have some control over the cost of the crisis, the MWRAs assessment of user reserves. You have control over the endowment of accounts.
Bob, could I ask you just a quick question before you head down this trail? I know that we had intended to have a short discussion about second water meters. Would that discussion have an impact on our decision about rates?
Yes, it would, and to jump to that now, just make a couple of comments. I think it's in the best interest of everyone if you're going to change your second water meter that gives me time so that the summer would be too fast.
Bob, just pick up a little bit of this noise behind you, please.
Okay, sorry, Bob.
I thought you were doing that.
No. Thank you. We can certainly discuss second water meters during the presentation or after. As a practical matter, you are now setting, you're being asked to set rates starting next December. So, starting a second water meter policy next winter, December, whatever it is, would be reasonable and appropriate. If you do it in the middle of a year that way, then the impact on rates is less, and whatever I show you tonight can be dealt with. If you were to say you wanted to start them tomorrow, we'd really have to do some math to see if the current rates this year would support that change.
That's, I'm just asking that question because there's been enough that's come our way that we really have to talk about. And if it was a decision to go in one direction other than the one we're in, I just was wondering what the impact would be to this right here.
Yeah, and real simply put, the amount of money we need to collect on sewer won't change when you add a second water meter if you do. But the relationship between the first water meter and the sewer charges we need to make would change. And in some ways, we're going to have to estimate what that is because we don't know.
Well, I'm asking that because in looking at the material you've sent out to us in advance, it was pretty clear that we may be experiencing some increases.
Yes.
And if that's the case, the whole second water meter thing begs a certain question because those increases will have to be calibrated to match the fact that a certain amount of second water meters wouldn't be taxed that way. I mean, you know, it's kind of, you know, you pay for what you use is the idea behind a second water meter. But there's, the financial implications are not small, I get that. So, I don't want this to get lost in the shuffle again, I guess is what...
We are going to have a little bit of a discussion on this.
We will have a discussion on this. I want to get the feeling of the board, I think implementing a two-meter change now is impractical.
Midstream is really what you're talking about if you do it now. I get that.
Yeah, midstream being a nice analogy.
I would much prefer you to implement it in a year from now, or, you know, effectively next spring, a year from now.
To take it to effect then in December of the...
You know, you may, you may want to get more information to finally make a decision as opposed to making that tonight, I don't know. I will tell you that when we last did PR analysis, I want to say four or five years ago, most communities have a second water meter, but many charge a higher rate for the second water meter, which in my...
Different water rate.
Yeah, it kind of defeats the purpose of making the change.
Higher, but not, not as high as the combined rate?
Probably true, yes. So, there's a lot of moving parts.
So, let's, if we could, we will have that discussion.
There's no real coupling at this point, I tell you.
I wouldn't say so, no doubt.
And so, Bob, please continue.
Okay. So, for FY '20, again, I mentioned there's a couple of things we have some control over that's in green. Water, the local costs, as FinCom will see tomorrow night, is just over 3%. Debt capital is very modest next year, just for one year. And the MWRAs assessments were just updated a couple of weeks ago, and they're not too bad, at 3.3. So, the water budget, not great, so the budget is up just over 2%, which is one of the lower ones in recent years. By contrast, the sewer budget is up eight over 8%. Our wage costs in sewer are higher because we're actually transferring one worker from water to sewer because of demand. So, the wages are a little lower in water and a little higher in sewer for that reason. You can see it's a big jump in capital and debt in sewer, and I'm going to talk a lot more about that. And sewer is the area that's under more financial pressure from the MWRA. And as I'll show you also, the MWRA assessment is much more impactful on the total sewer costs because it's a much bigger percent of the fund.
Is that why our sewer charges are always more than our water charges?
Yeah, and will always remain there, I think, for the foreseeable future. This talks about the economic development. There's another slight upward adjustment this year, which will save almost a percent on rates. Last year was a bigger jump, it saved 3% or 4% on rates. This year, it's a minor jump, and there's still a lot more development queued up, if you will. So, this pattern could continue for a couple more years.
Yeah, just, is it okay if we interrupt you with these questions as you go along? Because I have a question on this too, Barry.
Yes, so, thank you. So, obviously, if we're developing more, we're selling more water, which is great, but does it add to our costs? Is that net gain, or is that? I mean, the infrastructure's there, right? So, you know, we're not adding, or are we?
It adds an MWRA cost on a lagged basis. They charge us based on, is it last year's use? Sewer is three-year average, water is just one year. So, if suddenly you grew a lot, it's like the Volk School, you're paying, you know, tuition on last year's enrollment, we're paying on last year's usage for one year. The second year, you'd be paying on the current usage. But most, most of our costs in water are, if you will, fixed. You know, we don't necessarily have to hire more staff because we're selling more water.
Or build more pipes.
No, correct.
So, the infrastructure's there, so you're just pumping more through it.
Yeah, the MWRA charge is the most variable, depending on usage.
Right. I get, that was part of my question. So, then, the water conservation helps, selling less water helps in the MWRA facet of the equation.
Is that right? I mean, I thought, I remember Fred telling me exactly the opposite of that.
If you're buying less water from the MWRA, it costs less money.
But we're charging, we're getting less revenue.
The cost per cubic foot is higher.
If you have a lower volume, the rates will go up.
Because you fix less and fix.
Let's say I used 100, whatever it is, 100 cubic feet per year, and my rates are 10. And I suddenly cut down to half. Nothing, if everyone does the same, the rate's going to double. I use half, but the rates double, I'm paying the same because the water costs are the same.
Exactly, so we conserved ourselves into a conundrum.
Well, that's what happened, and if you can see this long chart, a lot of this is water conservation, and it does drive rates up, but it may not drive up your bill. That depends on how much you use. So, are you using less water at a faster rate than rates are going up?
However, the real bill, which is how much you pay, includes sewer.
And the real bill has a lot of fixed costs, it doesn't make any difference how you use water.
I think that's the reason that, you know, this other topic is, you know...
So, conservation, basically, it's a social policy thing, it's not necessarily a save money thing.
Correct.
Does the opposite act.
So, I thought that our, the rate for our water was based on sort of our, you know, the MWRA has a pie of water that they sell. And the larger the portion of the pie that we have, the larger amount of fixed costs will need to be, will need to cover the MWRA, is that...
That statement is correct. If we're taking a bigger share of the MWRA's water, we're going to pay more, no question.
Pay more, a higher rate?
I'll just say pay more dollars.
Because of the volume, not because of the fixed cost.
And then the rate calculation comes into, you know, how did you do relative to other towns in terms of what the MWRA's got to do here? But if we're, if we're buying more water at a faster rate than other communities, we will pay more, both dollars and rate. And then, if you're, if the water usage goes back up to what those levels were, it depends as to what the rates would be. If no more building happened in town and just usage went up, the rates would go down quite a bit, but your water bill would probably not. So, water rates and water bills are often inverse, is the simplest way to look at it.
But people react to the bill, not the rate?
I would say that's generally true in collections, but the rate's what gets the publicity.
At Beaver Road, when Mrs. Alzey opened that, it's the bottom line. She could care less what the rate is. She wants to know how much she's sending every quarter. And when that number continues to grow, you know, I mean, one of two things, either we had to stop showering so much, or we have to figure out what's causing that.
But it won't really matter because the, because, all right, yeah, sorry, let's, John, are you...
I, I'm done, except to say that this is not as simple as it sounds.
Correct, correct, okay.
The other factors I mentioned have a minor impact, some years, no impact. I'm suggesting a very small uptick this year, just making sure our reserves are healthy. We're going to, this was, used to be at 5%, we went down to 3 and 3/4, and we think 4 is a little safer, not a, not a big change. You have very healthy water reserves, as FinCom will learn tomorrow night. There's a request for almost $500,000 transferred out of sewer. That's the issue I mentioned with Charles Street. That's fine because it's a $5 million reserve fund, so it's almost not noticeable. We like to keep a target of about $2.5 million for each fund for things like this, which means you have, you know, half those reserves to use to help reduce the rate impact. But just like free cash in the budget, the more you use in this year means it's more difficult in the future because you have to keep using those amount of reserves, or you're just going to get a rate increase because your reserve use went down, no other reason.
Yes, Barry.
So, can you explain, I know how free cash is regenerated. How are water and sewer reserves regenerated?
Very similar, storm water, not, but water and sewer, pretty similar. We collect more revenue than we budgeted or anticipated. It's definitely an inexact science, there's lots of small pieces like collections related, how fast are people paying, are they letting them go onto the tax bill? And obviously, just how much water are you selling? We, we have a complex budget formula to figure that out, but honestly, all the little pieces don't add up to much, much of an impact on a $5 million fund. All the pieces might be $100,000. So, when your revenues exceed what you predicted, that's the most likely source of reserves buildup. It's also true that some years, they don't spend what the budget had. So, sometimes capital projects cost less. It doesn't happen that often, but sometimes it does. And in the past, especially in the storm water fund, that was the reason the reserve fund grew because you don't get unexpected revenue from storm water. It's a flat fee per house, the commercial one might be a little unexpected, but the lack of completing capital projects is what drove that balance.
So, similarly, similarly to our conservative budgeting process on the operating budget, we tend to want to have on water and sewer, we don't, we're less concerned about trying to lower the rate, right? And having the healthy reserves, because if we have the reserves, we can now apply that to lower the rate, you know, lower the rates next time, as opposed to trying to be really fine about it and just saying, well, pick a number, instead of raising it 5%, we can raise it 2% because we know we have the reserves. So, is that kind of a similar, is that a fair analysis?
And honestly, the biggest difference is obvious here, you don't have a prop 2.5 cap on water and sewer, it's whatever you vote. If you had a cap, we could never do the capital projects we do, except by asking for an override about every five years for water and sewer.
All right, that makes sense.
Any other questions?
This is a similar scenario that we've shown in the last few years that the board seemed to enjoy. If you use the same level of reserves as the current year, rates in water will go up 3.7%. That's this line right here. If you use no reserves at all, they'll go up 12%. So, that's, that's the penalty, if you will, for getting hooked on reserves is you're hooked on some amount down here so you don't see the 12, and then there's different gradations in between, which we can talk about.
Yes, yes, Vanessa.
I saw further along the presentation that I think you made the recommendation to go at 75%, which is the $425,000. Was that your recommendation in your own?
When I finish sewer, I'll explain. I think that's the safest place.
More broadly, then, is this similar to what the discussions we've had with use of free cash for the operating budget, where you, it's generally considered bad practice to dip into these reserves, or...
That's an element of it, but in water and sewer especially, it's much more dependent on future expected capital spending. So, you'll see that there's a lot more future capital spending, as much as just next year in FY '21. So, that's why you want to be a little more cautious about using reserves.
Thank you.
Sewer is, is higher, as it was shown in the budget, it's higher. 12% for water with no reserves, 15% if you didn't use any reserves in sewer. And again, if you use the same amount, 8%. So, just to put them all together, this would be the combined increase, depending on levels of reserves. And you can pick any amount for water and any amount for sewer, I'm just showing you examples. As I look further out, I'll look backwards first. This is your historic, recent historic changes in water and sewer. This 11% jump back here was because we were misestimating the conservation, and we were not selling nearly as much water, and we had to raise rates just to recover the fixed costs, if you will. So, that was, that was an accounting reason, wasn't a budget reason. This minus 7% is when the board voted to eliminate the 10% discount, so it was really like a 2.9 or 3% increase. Last year, there was such an uptick in usage, the board was able to leave rates the same for this, you know, for two years in a row. That gives you the backwards look. I think this might answer your question, Vanessa. Sorry for the black print, it's a little hard to read, but it was a lot harder to change it to white.
Can you grow that?
Not easily, John. Well, then, let me read you the important things.
I'm sure it's in here, I know it's in here.
This year in water, or I should say in FY '20 in water, our capital and debt, our capital infrastructure spending is 36% of the cost. In sewer, it's 12% of the cost. And again, I mentioned the MWRA is much more a factor in the sewer budget, it's 75% of costs, it's only 33 in water. This year in water, we had a very small projected growth in capital spending, which I mentioned earlier. But next year in FY '21, it's going up 16%. So, that's why, you know, if you look at the projections, 2.2% as a budget and 8% next year, the first thing that tells me, and I can tell you the pattern continues beyond that, is be careful in water how much reserves you use this first year because this is a relatively good year, looking out the next three to five years.
Because of anticipated gap.
Yeah, capital spending.
But also, but also too, aren't we, aren't we really, you know, over the next two, three, four, five years, aren't we really anticipating just selling a lot more water?
Yes, but just like, you know, general fund budgeting, we don't do too much on new growth. We're careful. Yes, we probably will.
And that might, and that could potentially mitigate the capital costs.
Absolutely, the rate, yes.
It'll grow the reserves for that.
It'll do that in the first year when you don't know about it. And then going forward, when you adjust for the volume, it'll help lower the rate increase.
So, potentially, we could choose to use a little bit more water reserves for the water rate and a little less reserves on the sewer. We don't have to do it the same percent.
Oh, yeah, you can use any amount in either fund, absolutely.
Because anticipating that we're going to have more use, so we can use more reserves on the water. And then just, just to kind of soften the increase, the overall increase.
And then, just to finish up in sewer, again, capital is much less of a factor locally for the rates. But this year's a 32% increase, and next year's a 24%. Those are less impactful than our spending on water infrastructure, but they're still big numbers. And if you look at our, our capital and our debt plans in water and sewer, there's no end in sight to how much money we need to spend. There's a lot of unaddressed capital. It's not urgent by any means, but TPW did a water, water pipe evaluation, I'm going to say maybe seven years ago or eight years ago. And we're at most 25% through, I think. Does that sound about ballpark right? It was the most urgent 25, but, you know, this town still has a lot of 1890s water mains. You know, you should be taking care of things on a regular basis, we're setting aside money for it. We didn't do that, no surprise. In general...
Go ahead, Andy. I was just going to tell, tell the board, I think you don't, I think for now, for this questioning, you don't need to ask my permission to speak, just, we're not stepping on each other's toes, so...
Bob, when you forward for capital projects for water and sewer, do our, are our reserves sufficient for those, as you say that there's no end in sight for the amount of projects that are needed in the future? Because we talk about how much of the reserves to use to soften the blow, are we shooting ourselves in the foot long-term by using the funds now? What I'm trying to, what I'm going towards is I want to make sure we don't hit a cliff where all of a sudden the rates spike and there's massive projects. Because you're obviously planning ahead, but it's a matter of how and what we use, choose to distribute the reserves.
Yeah, I mean, honestly, just like in any financial enterprise, the more you take as an increase in the early years, and the sooner you do it, the less impactful it will be on the future. So, you know, the board is always in a conundrum of how much do we do this year and how much do we rely on the future? My only comment on reserves is they are well more than adequate at 5 million each for anything you wanted to in the short run. You can certainly plan on using half those just simply to use for rates over the next who knows how many years.
That's a lot, though.
But the more you use in year one hooks you on that in years two and three, unless you want to take the bait of the increase in the future.
Well, are we at that place where we're going to talk about that? Or it sounds like you still have more to talk to us about.
I just wanted to show some of the debt and capital spending, if it's of interest, and just as a big picture, this is all the debt that we're going to be incurring in the future. This is not even on the table right now, but just to give you an idea, we are asking FinCom and then town meeting for $4.5 million on the Auburn tank that you know about, it's well discussed. What's less well discussed is, you know, 1.65 million each for water and sewer. And then these two things down here, you know, somewhere around 30 to 35 billion in today's dollars are not even planned for water meter, um, water main replacements, but it's out there.
Out there meaning 20 years?
25 years, yeah.
That came up a while, that came up maybe four, five years ago on FinCom, where it was sort of like, we looked at our long-term capo, and water and sewer at that time, that number was 25 million. And we stopped talking about it.
Right, so we started doing some of the work. And both in water and then sewer stations are here, there's, I think, 12 sewer stations. You know, we're partway through that project also, but you can see a few more scheduled. One of the reasons we stopped talking about it is because when we did that study and had those estimates, and then went out to actually get bids, it was quite a surprise. Sewer stations especially were much more expensive than had been forecast because not a lot of people do sewer stations. And the construction market is obviously red hot right now. So, that's one of the reasons is, I had imagined you could do all the sewer work in 15 years, sewer station work, and now realistically, it's 25 to 30.
So, it's more logical to do that kind of maintenance, repair, and replacement during quiet periods in construction. I mean, when everything's red hot, you're not going to get anybody to come and do it for, you know, short money. Unless they've got all the projects in the world. So, and, you know, this will, this too will change. It always does.
I'd say the work we did, Charles Street and those before and the one after, was most urgent. Some of them are really, really urgent. So, yes, you know, planning in your enterprise funds especially is a really long-term exercise. And it's really important not to go 10 years and just forget about things. And to do things when you maybe can afford it, maybe the construction market will have it. We may have waited a little too, too long in the last 20 years on some of the sewer stations.
But to Vanessa's question, is enough in there now to kind of anticipate the projects you just had on the...
Sure. Yes, but again, what rate of reserve usage do you want to hook the rates on? You're going to use half a million every year, probably not. Yeah, that, it'll take you through five, seven years.
So, but Bob, I'm sorry, I had to go ahead.
So, Bob, the improvements that you showed in the capital plan will be funded out of the capital plan, not out of these enterprise funds?
No, they're capital plans for the enterprise funds.
For the enterprise funds? So, they will, enterprise funds will take ahead?
Parts of the rates, yep.
Yeah, that's a bonus.
So, so, what I was meaning to ask you, Bob, is, I mean, correctly, you, you know, you let us know that if you're using a half a million dollars of reserves, then you're using it. You know, we're not banking it. But that also doesn't take into consideration that there may be excess revenues that come in as well. So, I mean, you could, one could argue, for example, that there'll be greatly expanded usage over the course of the next year. One could argue that because there's a lot of units that are going to come on stream here, and a lot of, a lot more people living in those units, and, you know, there'll be additional commercial going on stream as well. So, I guess you could argue that there may be unanticipated revenue gains that could offset some of the usage of the, you know, of the now. Because I got to tell you, I mean, you know, one of the things that concerns me greatly as a board, we have reduced, I mean, you have to look at at-risk people. We've reduced the senior tax relief, we've expanded business taxes, we've decided not to offer senior tax relief to small businesses. We have enacted an override, that's not the board, that's the citizens. And at the same time, we've added another year of record growth, therefore, record assessment growth. Therefore, at some point, I'd love us to be able to look at the taxpayers in this town... in this town and say, okay, here's one that's not going to go up.
Actually, we did that last year.
We did, we did, and I think it's something we need to consider again this year. Because a lot of the things that I've just mentioned could have a positive effect, and I think we need to give them some breathing room. I mean, I don't know how far we are away. When's the next debt exclusion roll off? Three years?
2024.
Yeah, three years, four years.
Four years.
High school, 2024, Wood End and.
Libraries before that, I think.
No.
Libraries after a year.
Oh, so we're five years out?
Yeah, that doesn't.
I can jump in, John. I share your concern, I have additional thoughts, but I know Bob still has more of the presentation to go through.
No, I'm at the point where we can have our discussion. I just want to add that I have the flexibility here for you to back into what rates, what reserves you want, if you want to tell me the rate.
Can you go back to the?
Yeah, well, in a sec. We met in December as part of the budget meetings. I had indicating something in the order of 5%. We got what I thought was surprisingly higher estimates out of Fred, out of the MWRA for your costs, especially in water. Now it's around six. Now, you can obviously do things to make it not six. But I'm just saying, in general terms, with the amount of reserves we have, with the amount of growth we're likely to have, you're not going to be looking at zero that's affordable unless we stop doing some capital or cut it way back. You're going to be looking more at the 5% over a longer period of time.
I think the zero was a nice gift and a nice surprise.
And it was. And, you know, how much increased usage are you going to get from the stuff that's, we know about, that's in the ground? There's 9,000 houses, you know, we're not building 900. That's 10%. Might we see 5%? We might. I don't think you're going to be seeing, you know, unexpected revenue growth from water.
I don't think it's, I agree, it's not going to be explosive.
Right.
We'll see an uptick for sure.
Definitely help at the margin.
Bob, so let me make sure I understand, get this straight. The recommended reserve is about 2.5 million for roughly across the board?
For each.
Each.
Five altogether.
Yeah.
And then. We have about double.
Maybe up 10.
And we have about twice that.
Right. With projects needed to be spent.
Right. So what you're saying is that if we, I guess, citizens or residents could ask, well, you've got, your recommendation is 5 million, you're twice that, so why don't you pare it back down to 5 million and use the 10 to 5 million to subsidize the rate?
Right.
And you're saying the danger of that is that next year we might not be in the black for that. Is that right?
It's the same thing we do during the budget.
Yeah.
You use free cash, then you're relying on free cash, and now you have no more free cash.
Yeah.
It's the same thing here.
Yeah, yeah. Just a second, Mark, when we're done.
You know, if you wanted to use a million bucks in each, just as an example.
Yeah.
You would have a lower water rate on the same sewer rate. That gives you an order of magnitude.
Yeah.
And could you afford a million next year? Absolutely you could, especially if we're going to go out of business. And you don't have to worry about the second and third, fifth year and 10th year. You definitely could.
So.
It's really difficult, I just, I know what the costs are going to be, not all of them, but I know the capital costs, I know the work needed. I assume that those costs aren't going to decrease for the work needed. I agree there's going to be more water sold to some degree, but that's going to move slower than the capital costs. So I'm just saying you should be cautious in how fast you use reserves. I'm not discouraging you from using them at all, there's plenty.
Yeah, we've always used them.
But if you use a number this year and you don't use it next year, you might be bumping rates 2%, 3%, 5% just because you didn't change your, or you changed your reserve policy.
It's very similar to the senior rate.
Yeah. We got to.
Yeah, you know, it's an opinion, but I would rather pay for capital work than a change in your reserve policy in my water.
So Bob, at this, I'm sorry, at this point, if you're done with your presentation.
I have stormwater, but the basic message in stormwater is no immediate change.
Okay.
Rates and status.
So we're going to deliberate this, obviously, after the public hearing. But do you have any more questions for Bob? Vanessa.
Bob, I know FinCom is going to be reviewing this tomorrow evening, right? It's, from what you said earlier, it sounds like we're actually reviewing the rates sooner than has been done in previous years. Is that correct?
No, I'm saying.
No, okay. Because I'd be interested in hearing what FinCom's take on this is as well. And we have one member of FinCom here, but I'd be interested in hearing from all of FinCom. Do we?
FinCom doesn't set the rates.
FinCom's never been part of this discussion, doesn't mean they can't be, but.
But no, 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 not necessarily, not specific, not specifically in regards to the rate, but in the use of the reserves.
Same comment, it's never been part of that discussion. Again, doesn't mean they can't be.
I mean, it could be a theoretical discussion and it's to take up in the future, but I mean, it's not.
Sometimes, in the past, the board has set rates after Town Meeting finished. So the budget was passed and no one knew, gee, I wonder how many reserves you're going to use. That made it be a little difficult for Town Meeting to really understand.
We've been doing it this way for the last four or five years.
Yeah, pretty much.
I'm not opposed to that in the future, but for tonight.
So the one, I mean, the one thing that I think that we have to be careful about is that, as Bob suggested, this is not an exact science. We don't know how much we're going to use and we don't know how much we're going to spend. And trying to kind of be cute about how much reserves we use to try to minimize the impact of any one year's rate increase, I think what would get people kind of upset in terms of their own budgeting is when we have to sort of, when we have spikes of rates and then they go down, and then they go up and they go down. You know, people can anticipate maybe small increases, but it's those large fluctuations because we're trying to cut it too fine. I think we have to be a little wary of, which I guess where I'm going with this, I'm arguing with maybe using a little bit less reserves so that, you know, we're not trying to give them a big rate decrease or the increase, you know, much smaller. So that we avoid next year, you know, like, because, you know, we have a zero, right? That's great. But if it goes up to 10%, 12% the next year, that's not great. So, you know, if we can try to kind of keep it more level, I think should be the long-term policy of this board with the idea knowing that we're never going to get exactly predicting usage and expenses, so.
As a point of clarification, Barry, do you mean, so for this year, for setting the rates, you know, Bob laid out 25% increments.
Yeah, can you?
Yeah, do you mind going back to that slide?
Are these questions for Bob or are we? Because I do want us to get to the public part of the hearing and then we can deliberate.
Okay.
I'll get up.
Is this the one you?
Yeah, that was, thank you.
I just want to reiterate that again, it's, nothing's in a perfect science, but right near, right now, my best guess is a year from now, you have an intrinsic cost basis that's gone up 2% per year faster than right now. So right now, I told you the budgets are going up 2-something and 8-something percent, so on average, 5. Next year, they're going to be on average 7. So I can already foresee you're going to need more reserves next year to just try to keep some semblance of order with.
So when you say use the 75%, or I'm just thinking that as a number?
That's your recommendation.
So how much reserves is that in terms of dollars?
475?
Yeah, the border.
Seven, almost 800. I honestly, I don't think you have a problem using a million or a million one combined. That would keep rates around the 5 area. I don't have a big, I don't see a big problem with that, but you're going to struggle next year if everything plays out as it does and there is a little more usage. You're going to have a struggle to try to keep rates at 5 next year. So the question is, kind of like the stormwater discussion we had last year, do you want to raise them now or do you want to raise them a little more in a year? There's no easy answer.
So the 75% though represents, oh, I see, you got the number right there.
Oh, so you have to add those two together.
Yeah, so there's 3.50 and there's 4.25.
So it's about 800.
Call it 800.
Okay, okay.
Do we want to move to?
So I have, do have one more question for you, Bob.
Yeah.
As a point of clarification of what you just said. So if you went to the 75% and you raised it by 5.3 or 5.7, I forget which one of those two it is. What you're suggesting is that you already can forecast a larger growth next year.
Yeah.
So are you suggesting that we smooth it out so that it stays static year over year? Is that what you're suggesting?
Well, I take Barry's point and some others that predictable rate that doesn't jump all over the place is generally more interesting to people. And in that regard, I'm saying that if you have an appetite to use so many reserves, use more of them next year than this year. It's really kind of that simple. So if you're thinking maybe we could use a million two.
Well, you always use more later because it's cheaper.
Well, there's that too.
Honestly, I mean, that's just, you know, that's fundamental finance. I mean, if you use more later, it's less expensive for a whole series of reasons, when, you know, if you think about the economics of this.
Yeah, I've just put two numbers up here just to see what it looked like. If you use half a million in water, your increase is 4.5%. If you use 600,000 in sewer, you see a 6%.
And so the blend.
Wouldn't go using a lot more.
The blend will not be 5, it'll be more than 5. It'll be closer to 6. 5.7 probably.
It'll be a little over 5. And the blend of reserves is a million one. I think you get into dangerous territory if you go too much above a million one combined, given what the future forecast is.
All right. So I'll open it up to public comment. And I remind you to please state your name and address. And to, I think there's few enough people in the room that we don't need to limit it, but be cognizant of the time. Thank you.
Mark Doxer, 110 Eba Road, two questions. One is that you said that the ideal enterprise fund reserve numbers are around 2.4 million each. I'm wondering what that, what is in that? Does that basically cover disasters, emergencies?
No.
So if it's covering disasters, emergencies, if we were to try to forecast over a less than 25-year period the capital needs, the new sewer stations and other things, where should, where would we say that the ideal number is in that case? Well, if just 2.4 million is emergency, how much more would we build in so that we can start doing some of those other projects when the construction market is down?
Yeah.
Well, in theory, if you wanted to live with whatever the cost of the construction was, you wouldn't need any more reserves. As long as you had 2.5, give or take, for emergencies in each, off you go. Use no reserves to set rates.
Right.
You wouldn't need them.
And where was the source of the funding? Is it debt exclusions or the?
No, if the board was willing to not use any reserves and set rates to 12% to 15% tonight.
Right.
Going forward, you, whatever the market rate is on the increase, rates paid it, it'd be okay that you didn't have reserves, if you didn't have them.
Right, so in some sense, the 2.4 million is kind of an emergency number. And if you wanted to buffer toward future projects, you'd make it a bit higher than that. Maybe not a full 5, but something maybe above 2.4.
We've kind of, sort of played around with trying to match up those excess reserves to capital planning and it's definitely not an exact science. So it, you know, I say 2.5 for emergencies, I don't know what the number is, but add something else to help you buffer the rates for capital planning. All of a sudden, you know, you're going, you did some preliminary work, you thought you're going to start a project next year, it's going to take an extra year, but gee, that's when you wanted to do meters. So all of a sudden, you're going to get a double hit in one year. So reserves do play a handy role in those kinds of things. And the 2.5 million is really not a scientific number. You know, it's, if the worst thing that possibly happened, I hate saying this, you know, were to happen in water or sewer, what would it cost? And, you know, we just saw a half million dollar problem and that was a really easy result for what could have happened in the circumstances we faced. It would have been much more expensive. And if you don't have the reserves, you have to immediately go out to the rate payers. And if you have to pay it over the last four months of the year, I don't even want to think what the rates would have to go to. You know, years before I got here, twice the board had to do mid-year increases because there weren't enough reserves. And there was an unanticipated change of some nature. So I think it's really important to do a lot of planning in these because you can.
If I could, second question, I'm sorry, I wasn't directing to you, I'll direct to you.
Yeah, sure.
In thinking about the numbers for kind of this notion of a million or a million one totally could be used out of the reserves, it sounds like that's kind of the max to kind of maintain that those 2.4s, knowing what's going to happen. But since we know, we anticipate there could be a 2% increase per year that follows, it might be prudent to not try to use that full max number of 1.1, maybe pick a lower number just for consideration.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I don't like any of the options, I'll be frank. Bill?
Thank you, Bill, round 28, I'm a row. I like the rest of you, my bar, this wonderful thing tells me to conserve and save money. Well, I did last year and it cost me one because I went down to the one. And I understand the minimum billing is two. I like that on the water side, I think that's fair. But I don't think it's fair on the sewer side because now I'm paying twice, I pay $10.17 extra for the sewer and I'm not putting it into the sewer.
Yeah.
And then the other favorite thing Bob and I have discussed very often is the storm water management. And by Supreme Court ruling, Massachusetts, it is a tax. That was down in the town of Saugus about eight, nine years ago. They found three factors, trends of tax. Party receives a particular benefit for paying it. This is referred to as sewers down there. It was paid by choice, which unlocked. And it is meant to help government cover the expenses and not make revenue. And you are raising revenue by this. My feeling, by Supreme Court ruling, it is not, the storm water management fee is not fully, and I don't want to have to take it back to court, but I might have to.
I see your point, I see your point, Bill. And I think, I think the board needs to think on that.
Mr. Chair, we've gotten, we have, I'm sure we've gotten advice from Town Council about whether or not we're able to do this. And I'm sure we're able to, or else we wouldn't. So I don't really see a need to labor now.
Okay. All right. Any other comments from the public? Yes, Gina.
Gina Snyder, one Jane Care. I guess I wanted to understand a little better about how MWRA sets the charges for redding. I noticed that they're, all the 40 or so communities, sort of the general increase in water sort of combined was 3.3%. And for redding, they listed 5.6%. So I wanted to see if somebody could answer why redding is somewhat tiny. Some communities actually had negative water rate increases from MWRA wholesale air charges.
Yeah, Bob? Is that last year or next year? It's the same answer.
That's their proposal for 2020.
We're buying more water. So it's not just the same amount of water, it's how much you're buying and what the change is. So it's the price of water and the amount of water combined.
So my understanding was that one of the issues, and this gets to the second water meter. One of the issues is that NWR A has a lot of debt. So you're not just paying for O and M and the fact that water has to flow through the pipes, but you also have to apportion that debt to the communities based on their water.
Deer Island and all.
There is some aspect of population that goes into sewer rates as well. So to have people using more water is actually going to cost everybody more money, but the ones using more water aren't really paying their full share for doing that. The other issue I have, well, I have two other issues with second meters. And that's that the Massachusetts updated their standards in 2012 to say that if you aren't, I know we're doing better than 65 gallons per person per day. And for that, I really applaud the water department and all the work that's been run in town by volunteer groups and conservation programs that we have as well. But that is, that's their limit. And it would be a real problem if outdoor water use started contributing to more than 65 gallons per person per day, which you might be encouraging if you have second meters. And then in addition, in 2006, when the NWR A and the various state organizations allowed us to do the inter-basin transfer that brought this vast quantity of water into redding, conservation restrictions were imposed permanently, basically as a condition of that. So I think it's a really bad idea and against the spirit of that agreement for us to then implement a policy or a program that basically does not encourage conservation anymore. So I would like you to take that under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Someone else, yes?
Yeah, just one other question.
Name and.
Yeah, a little finch if you want, Bill. Gina's comments certainly are apropos, and I agree with them. Another issue with second meters is that people that can afford second meters tend to have larger houses and need to water their lawns. And it has the effect of shifting the burden to people that are part of apartments or condos that don't have that option of either saving money like that. And again, you know, we've got a lot of fixed costs for the sewer infrastructure. And in a sense, that's taking money away from the maintenance of the sewer. And as I heard tonight, the sewer is certainly a big issue in terms of capital funding. Way back when, the Civil Water Association did a contest to see who could, who's using the lowest amount of water, you know, among their members. And that number was around 20 gallons per person per day. So these are, that's an achievable goal, especially considering the, all the new water-saving devices that are on the market. And again, I reiterate the fact that in terms of when we bought into the NWR A, the Inter-Basin Transfer Act had requirements that we maintain our conservation ethos here. And I think, you know, a second water meter would just be in contrast to that. And I also, I note Mr. Berman's comment that it's a social policy issue as much as anything else. And I think that's a very important thing to keep in mind.
All right, thank you, thank you. Yes, we have repeat customers. Bill?
Yes, yeah. I didn't know you were going to be discussing the second water meter. I just said against it.
Yeah.
If you've had the.
Well, it isn't.
Pleasure, if you will, of not having water, which I did in Brooklyn, Libya. And they mixed the water and sewer line. I got to tell you, for about 10 days, it was not very pleasant. So if you can afford to water your lawn, pay for it. It's a good way to handle the water.
Yes.
Another comment. A number of nearby communities are doing tiered water rates. And I have actually suggested this historically, that redding should consider that. And I really would like to see redding consider emulating some of our nearby neighbors on doing blocks with tiered rates. I know it's a bit of a study, and it takes a little more to put together what the rate would be. But that would also help with conservation and address the capital portion of what the rate ends up being for those who use more.
The idea of the tiered approach being if you're, if you're below a certain usage, you have a lower rate than if you're in the.
As you start using more, the rate, that, the rate goes out. It's a low fire.
Yeah, yeah, okay. Dan and then Vanessa? I'm sorry, we're still in the public. Yeah, any other public comment before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, Vanessa?
Move the board, close the hearing regarding the water, sewer, and storm water rate.
Discussion. Seeing none. Oh, did someone second that?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion, seeing none, Owen Faver, 5-0. Okay, now we move on to the, our, the board discussion. About, and Bob, it would be most helpful for me, and I don't know how the rest of the board feels, if you bring up that slide of our sort of options of. Oh, is that helpful for the board to center on this discussion?
I'm looking at 75% personally.
Okay.
I don't know if anyone else is.
All right, so we have 75?
For both, yeah.
Barry?
So I was, I like the idea of doing the 75% until I looked at the other slide, which is the water and sewer rates combined over time. And if we're at 75% on both, that's almost, let's call it an 8% increase. And if you look at, I mean, I have it on my screen here, but.
There.
No, it's the, it's the, it's the, it's the one that's, it's actually the one after the, the next one.
On this PowerPoint?
Yeah. There we go. So if we do that, we're at, we're at 8% increase. And if you look at just over the last few years, we've gone from a zero, just going backwards, zero, 3.35, 7.1, 2.3, 4.1, would be the biggest increase in seven years, which basically is the opposite of what I thought, what my personal goal would be, is to sort of try to keep those increases within a much smaller band. So I would like to perhaps look at using, because we are going to be selling more water by hook or by crook, maybe using 100% of what we used last year for mitigating water and maybe keeping 75% of the sewer. My guess, that makes it the combined maybe six something?
So this one here and this one here. Yeah, you're six and a half-ish.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
It's a little, you know, it's still a lot higher than the zero and a lot higher than, you know, some of the past years. But at least it's going to be consistent with kind of the usage, right? We're going to be, we're going to be selling more water. And we're still respecting the fact that we are going to keep money in, keep those reserves high for the capital projects that we need. So that's where I would.
Barry, repeat what your suggestion was, since they were different.
So using what we used last year?
For water.
For water, so 100%. I guess that's 550,000.
37.
Yeah, so that's a 3.7% increase.
And then on the sewer, doing the 75%.
That's 11.19.
That's a 10, 10. Yeah, $11.19.
So combined, it's five, it's about what, 900, right? 550 and 350?
6.7, 6.8.
Right, so it's a 6.8 increase. And then this way, it's, you know, it's basically helping a little bit on sort of the, smoothing out the rate, also recognizing the fact that we're going to sell more water.
Bob, what's the minimums? Looking at here.
Double the rate. Oh, okay. So if it's 11.19, it's 22.38.
So I don't know what that means in terms of like what the, well, what the combined rate would be on that. Do you have to, because it's not across the chart, you'd have to.
No, it's like six and a half, 6.7, somewhere in that area.
And it's still less than a million dollars of reserves combined, which I think you said.
900.
Yeah, over 1.1, we should really be nervous, and this is a little under 1. So it kind of keeps you that conservative budgeting model. But also, there's a little bit more of a softening in the rate.
Dan?
Recommendation on storm water rate?
Same.
Which is?
$60.
$60?
That's a flat fee rate.
Yeah.
So Barry, I like where you're going.
Vanessa?
I like where you're going as far as evening it out. You know, I think. Bob, can you go back to the previous one, please?
This one?
Yeah, thank you. As far as trying to level it out, because it is a little unpredictable.
I'd recommend doing something maybe a 90 water, 80 sewer, so that we're still, so that sewer's not seeing quite as big a jump, and we're still going in a direction which is decreasing.
90?
So 90% for water and 80% for sewer. I don't know exactly what the numbers are, what I'm, I'm trying to find sort of a compromise in between the two. So we like decrease water from your proposal and increase sewer.
John?
Yeah, I, so, Bob, you're suggesting that the usage of 1.1 million will leave the capital account in a reasonable condition. That is to say that it's unlikely we'd be doing damage to our capital position. Is that essentially what you said?
Correct.
Then frankly, for me, if we don't use the million one, I'm not voting for it. I want to use the million one and use it, you know, in an apportioned way to be determined whether it's, you know, split so that one is, is not a spiker and the other one a bluntery, if you know what I mean?
Yeah.
But personally, I think that, I think that the taxpayers in this town are, have been hit very hard in the last year. And there's another year of that coming. And if I don't want to damage our capital position, I trust Bob's judgment implicitly relative to his estimate of 1.1. So for me, if we're not going to use that whole point, 1.1, I can't support it. And how we split it is immaterial to me.
Vanessa?
So, you know, I agree with you. John, I also heard Bob say that if we have to decide whether we use a little more or a little less this year or next year, that we consider next year possibly using a little bit more. So because of the anticipated changes. So if we use on the order of 900,000 or so this year, it gives us a little bit more breathing room next year without then having to increase it above the 1.1. Because that's, you know, that, that's the same discussion we have with free cash, which is each year, you need to add a little bit more to reach the same place. So this year, if we keep it a little under, next year, we have more breathing room.
Well, you know, and I respect what you're saying, Vanessa. And to say that we get a little more breathing room is fine. But I personally, we're talking about a difference of $200,000 spread across, you know, a $10 million, you know, capital plan. And I say, let's give the rate payers and the taxpayers a little bit of room. And that's just kind of where I'm coming from. And I, you know, I understand right exactly what you're saying. And I'm not sitting here beating on the table. I'm just telling you philosophically speaking, I, I think people, I think our taxpayers and rate payers are getting hit pretty hard and have been and will continue to be. And if we can operate a rate on both sides of that, and I think it does make some sense to not dump, dump it all on the sewer. I think it really makes a lot of sense to blend that in an appropriate way. I'm, for one, for one vote, I think we should maximize the savings and protection to the rate payer, the taxpayer. That's just kind of where I'm coming from.
Andy, do you have?
I do. So.
Somebody make a motion?
Well, I'd just like to say a few, few words. I, I sort of fall into, I think, where the board is going on this. But to me, it's a question of giving the taxpayer some relief. It's, you know, we, for the reasons John elucidated, I don't need to repeat them. On the other hand, having greater reserves allows us to invest in, in our infrastructure for the future, helping future residents, future generations. So that part of me wants to, wants to say, let's just pour this money into upgrading our more than 100-year-old systems. That's it, I don't think we can, we can do that for the taxpayers. So those are my thoughts. Would someone like to make a motion?
Before we move to the motion, because there's, we haven't really settled on a number yet.
It's probably, you know what, before we make the motion, I think probably would, it's probably best if we can kind of circle around the number, and then we can.
That's where I'm going. I need actual numbers for a motion, we don't have one.
Yeah, I mean, just like, how much, how much do we want to reserve, we want to use?
So Bob, what, what table does everyone want to see up there? I'd like to see the table where you have, they have.
Why don't I just work in these columns, because then I can do lots of things at once.
Can't see that, but okay.
Oh, all right, I can make it a little bigger.
Well, let's, so, can I make a?
Oh, that's, oh, good.
Barry, you had mentioned the 100% for water and the 75% for sewer.
Which is 900,000.
Which is about, it's.
I think it's 900.
970.
Oh, it is?
970.
Oh, wow.
So I.
870? Oh, my, I, no, I trust it, my math's.
Well, it's 550 and 420. Unless I looked at the chart wrong.
What was your second number, 75% or 80% of?
75.
Of 4, I don't know, what's 75% of 475?
75% of sewer?
Oh, you're right.
75% for sewer.
That's 8.8, right?
So 550 and 350, more or less?
425 is what you have in your chart. So, and I had suggested, say, 90 for water and 80 for sewer, but we don't have a magical chart for that, so I don't know what those numbers are. Just as a way of decreasing water as well and making it not quite so big on the sewer side.
Can I just ask again? I thought Barry and Dan had then added 550 for water, which is the same, 100%, more or less.
Yeah.
And then add 350 for sewer.
Oh, excuse me.
Which is 75%.
You're right.
Oh, okay, so I was right.
So if, if that's true.
So 550.
What? Wait.
You're looking at 3, 3.7% in water and 10% in sewer, based on the thing you just said.
What's the spend of reserves total?
The total of 900,000. 550 and 350. And that's a 6.7, 8% combined.
So that is using, I just want to be clear, that's using the same increase for the water rates, holding that at 3.7, and then going to a, what was the percentage?
350,000 of reserves, which is more or less three quarters.
That's 75.
But that gives you a 10% increase on sewer.
Wait, no, Vanessa is right.
No, but.
It says here, 75% is.
4.5.
Is 8.8% increase.
So it's a 5F8.
Where are you? In the packet over the weekend, there was two mistakes, if you're looking at the packet over the weekend.
I'm looking at the Thursday packet.
Yeah.
Oh, no, I don't know what packet.
So I'm looking at the one that has.
I might have the wrong one, okay.
No reserves, 50 water, sewer combined. It shows.
Right here, you've just suggested 350, 75%. I can make it look bigger.
Okay, I'm looking, I got wrong numbers then.
I, I do too, that's why.
Then that's 10% increase on rates.
Oh, boy, so do I, okay.
So that's using 350,000 of reserve.
And then 550.
On the sewer side, 350 of reserves.
Yeah.
Right.
And how much water reserves?
550.
For a total of?
And that's a 6 and 3/4% combined increase.
And in order to do the calculation that.
Using a million one drives it down to six, or maybe just a tiny bit below.
Yeah.
That's, that's what your difference is.
That is, well, you know, that's the delta between where I am.
900 versus 1.1.
Right.
Yes. $200,000, which is a rounding error when we think about town budgets and so forth. But it's not a rounding error in a household, I will tell you that.
I think you're in general agreement on water.
Okay.
So I'm fine with this. If we keep the, you know, for the sake of expediency, if you keep water at 100%, take sewer down to 75, what do, can you confirm, Bob, what the rates would be?
The sewer rate would be $11.19, a 10% increase.
$11.19, and what did you say, and for sewer?
That's, that's sewer.
Water's 10.37.
Going backwards, water is $10.37, a 3.7% increase.
$10.37?
That's by using 550,000.
And the combined increase is?
And sewer, using 350, is $11.19, $11.19, a 10% increase.
So overall, if the. So overall, the combo is about 6.8% combined tonight. And if we go to, and if we use what John is suggesting at 1.1, it goes to, from 6.8 to 5.7, did he say?
Let me just put it all on sewer.
Because it's like, yeah.
If you, if you agree on water at the 3.7% increase, which seems reasonable, and you're really just discussing the sewer, John's suggestion would increase sewer rates just under 7 and suppose to 10%. So a combined difference of 1.5% more or less.
Yeah, I...
And what would the actual blended increase be?
Yeah.
5.9 roughly?
Less.
5.7?
5.3. No, because, yeah, it's about a percent difference.
5.3.
Yeah.
I, I think that's substantial for a homeowner. That's, you know, I'm, frankly, I, and I'm not trying to be difficult, but I'm stuck in the mud.
And what's, what does the change do for 1119, if we go at that point?
The combined rate?
Yeah.
6.8.
No, 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 what do we put on the sewer rate to get that?
350,000.
And what's the rate for 100?
1119.
That's what we have.
That's what you would have, you're at 1017 right now.
Right.
1017, is that 75%?
1017 is today's rate.
Yeah.
And Dan was asking what is next?
1017 is my question.
Yeah.
Keep it today's.
So I, I'm comfortable moving with the 75% for sewer and the 100% for water.
And that total, Bob, is 1.1?
It's 900,000 reserves and a combined rate around 6.8%. Much more, much more on sewer.
All right, so we're really like, there's, there's sort of a, there's, there's 900,000 on the table, there's a million one on the table.
Yeah.
We'll, we'll, let's just, let's do a million.
Right.
Let's just do a million.
I mean, we're...
I mean, it's, it's really at the end.
But, you know, the, the reason I'm leaning more towards 900,000 is not to split hairs, but to get us going in the right direction, which is to decrease our dependency on reserves, especially knowing the quantity of capital projects that we have on the horizon.
No, I mean, I, I, I agree with that, but I think...
And then next year, again, it goes to next year being able to not hit people as hard with such a, with a massive increase, potentially.
This is the three numbers you're discussing. A 10% increase is a few members' positions, 6.9 is John's, and 8.5 is split in the middle for the water, increase going up to 3.7.
Okay, so keeping the water at that level.
Bob, can you clarify those three on the right? Is that...
I gotta...
100%, 75% and something in between?
No, it's a million one, 900,000 or a million. I mean, in other words, this number here is 900,000. Here's a million, here's a million one in reserves, fixing the water at 550,000, and just putting all your difference of opinion on sewer.
So it's 91.1 and 1.
See, then the difference is...
It's 900,000, I'd put them on a order of 1.1 in the middle and then a compromise, if you will, to the far right-hand side.
So the far right-hand side is an 8?
That's a million, 550 and 450.
But that's on the sewer, what's the combined?
6.1.
6.1 if we do a million?
Instead of 6.8.
6.1 if we do a million?
Or instead of 5.3.
All right.
Yeah.
You know what, I'm, I'm, I'm comfortable in the middle.
All right, so...
So that's a 3.7 in the water and a 8.1?
8.5 in sewer.
8.5 in sewer, okay.
All right, so it's 1037 for 100 cubic, correct?
And then 1103.
And what's the sewer?
1103.
What was that?
$11.03.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion.
I, I have it here.
Do you? All right, go ahead.
Okay.
Then for the minimums, it's double.
Using that number, those numbers.
Yeah.
All right, so I just, I'm going to say it one more time, the water rate is at 1037?
Yep.
And the sewer rate is at 1103.
Right, and you double each of those with minimum.
7...
Say that again?
Yeah.
Double each of those to get to the minimum number, minimum quarter, minimum quarterly?
2074 on water and 2206 on sewer.
Is there a minimum, if you, like, if you don't use a lot of water?
But the minimums aren't listed here in the motion.
You have to fill them in.
That's the minimum.
Have you, okay. Say that to me again, Bob, water is minimum?
Uh, water, water.
2074.
27, $20.72.
Sewer is 2206.
Okay.
Go.
All right, and the storm water rate stays at 60?
Yep.
Correct.
Okay, great. Am I reading them all at once, or do you want to do the piecemeal?
No, you do the whole thing.
Okay. Move to set the fiscal year 2020 water rate at 1037 per 100 cubic feet with a minimum quarterly bill of 2074, effective with the December 2019 billing. Move to set the fiscal year 2020 sewer rate at 1103 per 100 cubic feet with a minimum quarterly bill of 2206, effective with the December 2019 billing. Move to set storm water rate at 60 per unit, 32 10 square feet per year to be billed quarterly, effective with the December 2019 billing.
Second.
Discussion. John?
The motion that's on the table represents how much of the reserves being used total?
As a million. A million dollars.
Okay. I'd just point out that by not utilizing the full maximum that we were advised would not put us in trouble. We add $100,000 to a $10 million reserve at the risk of adding a percent or more to our ratepayers and our taxpayers, oh, their overall bill. I, I just think it's, I think it's silly, and I can't, I cannot support it.
Can you explain, you said at the risk of...
Bob has said very clearly that by spending 1.1 million...
Yes.
That we do not risk our future capital accounts.
Yes.
That we are maintaining ourselves in a, in an area that is, continues to be reasonably conservative, can I use that word? I don't want to put words in your mouth, Bob.
I think that's fair.
Okay. So, for me, I'm, I'm suggesting that we should pass that kind of savings through, I mean, we see this example at FinCom year after year, okay? I mean, reserves are, reserves are in excess of what their stated norms are, so they spend down some of those reserves.
Yep.
Our reserves are in excess of, in this particular thing, in excess of what's net, what's needed. And so, spending down some of that, as long as you don't go into dangerous territory, I, I'm not a big one for spending rainy day accounts, because that's what we're really talking about, you guys have heard me talk about that over time. But prudent spending to protect our citizens as best we can, and you know, honestly, the people at greatest risk are those who have been hit the hardest over the course of the last year, so that's kind of why I'm, I'm not trying to be unreasonable with anybody here. I'm just feeling very strongly about this.
So I just want to make a comment. Is it correct that we're dealing with a difference of spending down 1, 1.1 million versus 1 million?
Yes, it's $100,000.
It's $100,000 that we're, that we're disagreeing on here.
$100,000 that the town would save rather than be passed through to the taxpayer?
Right, yes, we're keeping in, keeping in reserve for, for the future.
Yeah, 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 so, so it's, that's where the difference is, yes.
Yes, that is where the difference is.
I mean, I, John, I, I hear your point. I'm also, I also heard the town manager say that we have expenses on the horizon, and so part of being fiscally prudent is looking out for the future of our spending needs as well as our current and most immediate needs. And I think this is a compromise between those two parts that Bob has put before us. So just, so in my, in my interpretation, the 1.1 is the maximum. He has not said that we should go there. He has said that next year, we could have additional financial demands. So in my mind, we're trying to split difference between what is needed now and what will be needed next year, and what we know is likely to happen next year.
I mean, I, I...
Barry, yes.
I mean, I heard him, I heard, he's sitting right here.
He can hear, he's here.
Yeah. I didn't mean to be rude.
That's all right.
I heard the, the town manager, when, when he put this together, that he was sort of hoping that we would go use 75% of, of what we used last year, both in water and sewer, which would have been, I think, in the eights, maybe 750 or 80?
I wouldn't say I was hoping.
Well, you were...
I was illustrating.
You were, you were...
My, my only hope is that you didn't try to give more than a million one.
Right. But, I mean, you chose to illustrate it with that point, so, I mean, I, that, that's, that's kind of what I heard. And the other thing I heard loud and clear was sort of the uncertainty, well, the certainty of a lot of these projects down the road and the, and the higher expenses that are associated with them. So, you know, why I kind of sort of fell in the middle is because I do, John, believe, I mean, I, I think you make a valid point, we should try to pass on this, as much of the savings as we possibly can, but also try to mitigate those spikes, you know? And again, we, we were at zero last year, which is a great thing, so anything that we were going to do above that was going to be above zero and it was going to be, it was going to be an increase. So, you know, my idea of going to the million is, is kind of, you know, kind of mitigate those spikes, use as much as we can, but be mindful that down the road, we could be having these huge expenses that would force much, much bigger increases. So that's why I was kind of comfortable, I mean, the 100, I mean, we probably spent a lot more time on this $100,000 than we needed to, but I think it's, it's sort of important to kind of notate sort of, you know, where the, where the emphasis, you know, kind of was in the thinking.
May I have a minute, we vote?
Books vote.
Yeah, okay. So...
Her motion.
Yeah, all in favor of Vanessa's motion? All, not, all opposed?
I'm ready to roll.
We have a new rate?
We have a new rate. I need to...
We don't have to be even all the time.
I need to...
It's okay.
Well, we can never be even.
Yeah, I, it, it was hoping that we, we could somehow come together, but, you know. Okay, I'll, I have a five-minute break. Take over.
Okay.
Thank you for coming.
Captain, cap. Captain. Captain.
So that they may attend an appropriate meeting. Now, Ray, we had a little bit of a divergence of opinion about the notice. We were suggesting, he is saying, I think, that anybody who's being interviewed should really be on the agenda. Which would preclude any last-minute changes, which is something we have been doing. And then if-
That was more for accommodation of schedule.
That's a tough issue.
It is a tough issue, but you could take it under the 48-hour rule. His preference would be if they can be interviewed. They come in, in that 48 hours, they'd be interviewed in a subsequent VASC meeting. So-
Yeah, you should only interview someone who's not on agenda if it's really urgent.
Yeah.
Running out of time, or some reason why. Look, we just, just like unanticipated things that come before you, it's really something we just have to do.
Well, this, I think the verbiage here just talks about how they're going to notify the board and committee chairs. So I don't think that's a problem. So we can leave that, not use the 48 hours prior. But I think the direction to staff is to try to get-
Yeah, I think your language is fine, we just have to understand.
Okay. Yep.
If we do.
And then the copy of the interview pack will be sent to the select board, all candidates and committee chairs. VASC will vote a slate of candidates for the annual reappointments. And this is all language, the consent item stuff was in there before. Any member of the select board, or any candidate may ask for recommendations to be removed, that they be taken off the slate, separately interviewed, or just withdrawn. And any, yeah, candidate can be separately interviewed by the select board. That has not really happened in practice, but it's something we have. And during the year, we just say within five days of a vacancy, we post the complete listing of vacancies. It's usually just a single position. We invite all associate members of the affected board to apply. And they don't need to necessarily be interviewed, but they're always invited to come in, just because they're effectively incumbents. And then the VASC chair and the town meeting, town manager's office will schedule, they'll work with the chair to schedule one or more dates. We'll leave that kind of open for VASC interviews. And we'll make every effort to accommodate folks. And the requirements up above of 1-5, 2-4, and 2-9 are still applicable here. So, alright, that completes one. Thanks Barry.
Just to interject.
Sure.
Whoever makes the motion, I'd ask a friendly amendment to be made. I went through this and found just six instances where, for instance, it says the word "select men" still. And I'm guessing, but you correct me. We want it to say "select board members." And then there's a couple instances of "chairman," and that could just say "chair." So if a friendly amendment can accept those kind of changes, that'd be helpful.
Okay.
And I'll let Caitlin look through and really find how many there are.
Okay, I think we can, who's the secretary again?
They didn't do it.
I don't remember.
There we go.
So before we proceed to the motion-
We're not. Going to do the hearing. Yes.
What was that? Yeah. So are we still moving forward with the hearing, you're still presenting?
I'm doing my presentation on two now.
We're doing this all as a one, as a one-time-
No, there'll be two different motions. Do you want to have discussions separate?
Actually, no, maybe.
Two, I think two is important to go through, because some of the timing issues impact.
Okay. Do you want to talk a little bit about this?
No, you're doing a great job.
Alright, alright. Since you, Andy did a pretty good job rewriting this stuff here. He actually went through, combed through the bylaws, the charter, and looked for places where we could slim down the language here. A lot of what we're doing here, instead of repeating things that are in those two documents, we're simply making references. But the agreement, the tacit agreement is that the actual language might be cast into some kind of a handbook for new selectmen and onboarding document. But in terms of a policy, you don't want that stuff here. Okay, general provisions.
Yeah, most of that stuff's crossed out.
Yeah. It is, the number, we just simply abbreviated it this way, where procedures regarding meetings, rules and minutes, voting. If you want to know anything about that, go to section 88 of the charter, go to section 331 of the bylaws to know about this stuff.
So we're on two now?
Yes, we're on two.
Yeah.
Remote participation, the language is necessary, because that is not actually in our bylaws or charter. I think I'm right on that.
That's correct.
So we do need to spell out all the references to state law.
If I could interrupt, there is, I did write a small intro-
Yes, you did.
-to this. The idea of being sort of giving heads up to the volunteers what their responsibilities are.
Yep. In order to learn their responsibilities, volunteers are encouraged to use this list as a reference guide.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have remote, I just lays all that out. Ray, Lord Smith did more references. Here's the code of conduct. So the-
Is that 2.2?
2.2. Each member of the select board, as well as every board and committee member, we're shorting BCC to BC, because that's the charter way of saying it.
What's BCC anyway?
Board, committee, commission. Committee, commission, but we really don't appoint commissions.
Well, we just changed the legal reference to just two, instead of three.
Okay.
And this you insist to apply to volunteers, now it goes to us?
Correct. Sections of it apply to us, most of it applies to us, too, there are some-
For volunteers.
That don't make sense.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Unless something changed that I don't know about.
Let's see, engaged, and this is mostly Word smithing.
Oh, yeah.
Has everybody looked at the clean version, and do they have?
No, I actually just looked at the marked-up version and made notes.
Okay, okay. Alright. Well, okay, now, in 2-3, boards and committees not created by bylaws and charters, so we-
Dan, did you want to point out the addition that we made?
Ah, enforcement part.
Yeah, this is a tough one.
Okay.
Reproach that one.
Yep.
Yeah.
Which one? If, 4-2-3. If a select board member's conduct is inconsistent with this code of conduct, the chair of the select board will discuss the conduct with the member. If the member continues with the conduct in question, the select board may reproach the member. Which presumably, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we struggled with-
It's Rule 25 in the Senate.
Yeah, we struggled with this, because we had enforcement for all the other volunteers, but nothing for us. And how do you really, the same options are not open to-
We can't vote each other off.
Right.
It's not allowed.
Right.
Only the voters do.
So this is meant as a point of discussion.
So what do we do? Do we, does somebody get a spanking?
Yeah. A public flogging, actually. We thought of public flogging, we thought of stocks.
In the block, out in the common.
We rejected all that.
What is the consequences?
The reproach would be, you know, Vanessa, you've been doing this time and time again. Stop doing it. We're upset with you.
If you do it again, we're going to get really upset.
Are we talking about this here now?
No, no, I just wanted to-
We're almost there.
I wanted to explain the reasoning behind this. Okay.
Why not get called out?
That's fine.
Just as an example. Ray suggested some slim downs, 2-1 here, I'm a little, okay. Talk a little bit about associate members. Yeah, he didn't change any of the language, I thought he was going to pull some of that out, but it's still in, but it does no harm. So these are the entities that are just created by the select board, and they're not, Andy, in the bylaws and charters.
And they're not standing, because that's a town.
One of them is set up in the charter, but not-
Charter, term.
Right, I think that, is that the, so that's why we kept the town forest here.
Yeah.
Right.
We pulled some others out, but we kept the town forest in here. See, CAC is out. Because, oh, wait, we rewrote it, okay, I'm sorry. Trails is in.
Yeah, small changes to date track. Big change to the CAC, because it was very outdated.
Yes.
So we just went with their, what's the purpose, the mission statement on the website. Yeah.
Okay. And town forest, here's the, there's a reference to the memorial charter, but there's other material we felt should be included here. They suggested, Andy, that we take out any references to where they fall in the town's organizational chart.
That's fine.
Because that's really an admin decision by Bob and his people, so anyone has to change it.
And it could change, right.
Okay, street fair committee is defunct. Ad hoc committees, most of the ones that were in the old policy are gone. The only one that is really there anymore, is there at all, is the human rights, the committee to establish a human rights board to which you're making appointments tonight. So that is the sole survivor in that section.
It actually wasn't there before. So everything went, and we-
That's right, it was added, sorry. Just for a comment on what happened to 2-5 and 2-6. After a lot of discussion, we, in reading this, we realized this really doesn't apply to volunteer boards. This is volunteers that work at the senior center, or wherever, in the town hall. So Bob's suggestion was that 2-5 and 2-6, 2-6 is the Eugene Iger Award, which is for those kinds of volunteers. Those should be pulled into the personnel policies, section 6, so that's being recommended to staff to do.
So they get out of our-
Right. So they will do whatever with this, and re-present it to us at some point.
Do we give, I mean, do we still give those awards? I don't remember us doing it in any public.
14 years.
Alright, now I'm going to turn this over to first, to questions from the board.
Yes.
Are we, starting on section one?
Let's go back to one. Can we, can we do it section by section?
Yeah, and please limit to the questions, just questions.
Alright, so anything in the first discussion, first section?
I have lots.
Yeah, I have, I have nothing, yeah, I mean-
First, I want to start by thanking Dan and Andy for doing this. This was clearly a massive amount of work. You know, the section on the VASC alone was massive, and it's great. I have sort of a few minor things, some that are larger questions, some minor edits, suggested changes, et cetera. And I'm concerned that, it's 10:35, we have two other issues.
We have to appoint a-
We have to appoint-
How busy is our scheduling? We did anticipate this might need to be continued.
Yeah, yeah, so, so, you know, we can push it to our next meeting.
Actually, can I make a suggestion? So, you said you had a lot of notes, I have a lot of notes. Could it, would a process, could process be, is that maybe we all send our stuff to Bob, and then it all, so at our next meeting, there's a thing with all of our questions on it, so that-
You could do that.
Yeah.
We can all then get it ahead of time.
Yes.
And think about it, and then it'll make that discussion faster.
Okay, Bob?
Well, we got two other, yeah.
Can we do this at a Google Doc?
No.
No, not legally, unfortunately.
Even if we make it public? Laws have to catch on to.
I know. So, well, at this point, just to make the most sense, make a motion to continue the hearing?
Yes.
And I'll be happy to make that, and we'll continue it. Do we have a time certain at the 26th?
We've already advertised an 8 o'clock and an 8:30 hearing for next meeting.
Yeah, this should be later.
The first one is four or five PTTF suggestions, you saw it last time. And then the other one is an RMLT telephone request that shouldn't, request shouldn't take long.
Okay.
So I would suggest you continue it to nine o'clock.
Well, this-
I know you have that.
I want to get that, that's going to take like 10 minutes to talk about, I think.
And that's not going to be a hearing, right?
No.
We're just talking.
Is it unrealistic to think about having a single agenda meeting next week on just this?
Probably.
Give me my book.
I think I'm busy four nights.
Yeah.
Honestly.
I'm busy ACY.
And I'm not trying to create, I'm just-
Sup to you.
I agree.
I mean, I have like two things. I know that both of you have a lot to talk about. And you two already talked about a lot, so-
Bob, as a point of clarification, do we, as we- Does there need to be a public hearing where we discuss it, or when we've implemented all of our changes? So where I'm going with this is, it gives us a little bit more flexibility if we can have a casual conversation, incorporate the edits, but not necessarily vote on them that night, but then have a public hearing where, once we've reached agreement on everything, then we put it forward. Because right now, it just seems like it's-
That's, that's kind of a chaotic way to do it, with all due respect. But my plan is to-
You just keep continuing the public hearing until you're ready to vote.
Right.
Well, but we closed the public hearing.
The idea here is-
Oh, not on this, not on this, we continued it.
Here's where I'm going with this. This marked-up guideline will be the main motion, when we close the hearing, and then amendments will be accepted. So think, think about, if you just have questions, great. If you want to make a change somewhere, that's the time to think about crafting it.
Yeah.
So you can look at this and figure out where I want to do a motion to amend.
So I'm just looking at-
And that's how we'll do it.
Yeah.
And some of them may be friendly amendments.
Right.
Some of them may require Ray's input.
You should run them by Ray then, through Bob.
Yeah. And some of them are, a few are interconnected because of time. You know, if you would choose one, like on the reorg, that's going to affect then the liaison appointments, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, that's correct.
So that, that one we might want to take together. But I'm just looking at March 26th. We do have an executive session at 6:00.
Yeah.
We have a presentation by Matt.
Okay.
Who?
Matt Cronellis, to replace the surplus bylaw with the select board policy.
Yeah, that's probably not half an hour, depends if you have a lot of questions, but that's, that's time critical before town meeting.
Okay. And then we, the rest of the PTTF?
I think so.
Should we do it at 9:00? And well, this may take an hour, hour and a half, but we'll get through it.
But it won't, it shouldn't take that long if we're able to get all of our stuff to Bob ahead of time.
Give it to Bob, if you do have questions that Ray should look at, please point that out.
I have those, but I also have some that are going to require board discussion, because it's either-
Of course.
Well, you know what the motion's going to be, so if you want to-
Put it in a motion form, and then with a little sentence about what you're trying to get at.
We can't dance around and look for consensus on every minor point here, we'll be here for two days.
One of the things you need to be aware of, is that hearing that you're going to have around all those parking places?
Yes.
Will be full.
Oh, really? Okay.
Okay, you're going to, you're going to have people here. You know, you're impacting, I mean, probably less about Linden Street, but you're going to hear from a lot of people about what's going to be going on over Joshua. That's, I'm speculating.
That one's not on your agenda.
It's not?
No, you've already moved the trial period. Which hasn't started yet.
We did that without a public hearing?
Yep, because it's just a trial period.
Okay, alright.
So no permanent change.
What do we have, what is in the public hearing?
Yeah, you reminded us.
Some more 30-minute spaces, the four hours, and the two big municipal offices.
Well, you'll get some play out of those.
And the two spaces down by Tred.
I'm just saying, that's not going to be like a two-minute hit.
Alright, so I'm going to make a motion to-
So, wait, before we, Dan, before we move to motion, taking each of mine, Barry's edits, in a motion for each individual one, is, doesn't seem practical to me, especially considering some of them, as Andy mentioned, he had apparently the like the same one I did, that some of them are interconnected. And some of them, you know, edits were made by the two of you, but that doesn't necessarily mean that the rest of us are in agreement with the language used. So tackling each of those as a motion seems excessive.
Why don't you send them to Bob, we'll work something out that's equitable.
Yeah.
You all have Word documents with the bold and cross-out.
Yeah.
And this, as you can see, many colors of bold and cross-out. I think it's most practical, if you don't mind, it's a little inconvenient, if you can use the note feature.
Sure.
And anytime you have a comment, if it's a motion, or just a thought, whatever it is, question, if you put it as a note, that's really easy for me to find.
Given that we're effectively presenting the accepted change version, would it make sense for you guys to mark that up? You can mark that one up.
Yeah, I can send you the accepted changes, I sent you a PDF, I could send you a Word document.
I think you sent that.
And I have that, no, you have a PDF for accepted.
So, so I'd like to, we need to move this along. Dan suggested moving this to 9:00, 9:00 PM at our next meeting.
Yes.
And, look, this is policy, we want to get it right.
Right.
It's going to be policy for a while. So let's put it for 9:00, and we're going to do the best we can. People are going to get comments, it'll be in the packet, we'll have time to-
So you'll be furnished, before we vote, with the Word copy of the accepted changes, it's going to be the motion.
Yep.
You mark it up, and then we'll have something to talk about.
Well, I'm not going to be marking it up so much as, I think, with comments, yes.
If whoever has comments, could really try their best to get them this week, I can get them to Ray, and Ray and I can have a back and forth. And I'll leave you two out, with all due respect.
Yes.
Just to avoid-
Yeah, that's fine.
I think we only have a few that have-
John, has a clue?
Yes, John, one last thing.
Can we, can we agree, and I realize we can't lock this in the concrete, but in a general way among the five of us?
Yeah.
Can we agree that on the 26th, this is going to, we're going to go till this gets done?
Yeah.
While I love that idea, it's not-
Yeah, I do, too.
I don't think good decisions get made after a certain hour. And let's face it, we get tired.
Did we discard the idea of meeting next Tuesday?
We have been processing these thoughts-
Right.
-for months, yeah.
Alright, alright.
But we haven't, this is the first time that any of us have seen-
Stop, you're both right.
All of their work.
Can we meet next week? Is that feasible?
Stop, you're both right.
Yeah, I am not going to schedule an extra, an extra meeting next week. We've had other times where I think I would have been much more inclined to schedule an additional meeting, and I'm reluctant to do it on this. I think we, I think this is what- Well, what's the, look, I, I'm not, okay. What's the feeling of the board undoing?
Doable in an hour.
Okay.
If we get organized, if you get all the stuff, I am.
But we're going to go-
Hope springs eternal.
Bada bing, bada boom, through it, okay?
Okay.
Get organized, get your stuff together, it shouldn't be that long.
I mean, it didn't take me long to write these notes, so it's not going to take me long to put them in English.
Okay, let's do that.
Depending on the amount of work these guys did to get here, what you have, whatever it is, is less, I guarantee it.
I agree.
Doesn't mean you'll all agree on everything, but-
And that's the point.
Yeah. Right. So, we'll do the best we can. Can someone make a motion?
Move to continue the hearing on Articles 1 and 2 to 9:00 PM on March 26th.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor? Okay, 5-0. Over to Barry and Vanessa.
I'm just going to make a motion, we have our-
Yep.
That's all we need.
Ad hoc meeting scheduled for the 20th.
You stay there.
23rd?
Yep.
Fall Monday, so, motion. Thank you. Move forward, appoint the following nominees to the Ad hoc Committee on Human Rights, with a term expiring on November 30th, 2019, when the committee will sunset. Deputy Chief David Clark, Lisa Egan, Josh Goldlust, Russ Graham, Lori Houghton, Sherelle Lestrade, Gina Beck McCormick, and Reverend Kyung Yul Yu. Is there a second?
Discussion.
Was there any interview process for this, or how, did you, is folks just volunteered? I mean, they're all well-known, I just wondered.
Yeah.
Well, the process was, we talked about kind of, well, first of all, it was kind of, part of it was based on sort of what the, what the, you know, filling slots on that.
Right.
We talked to lots of people, we sort of filled in, kind of-
Okay, so you informally discussed it with them.
Yeah, and they weren't a subcommittee, so they weren't a quorum. They were-
And the other thing, too, was, is that, you know, we talked to a lot more people than whose names are on this list, so, you know.
We had some people politely decline.
Right.
Yeah.
And some people not so politely declined, no.
It's a diverse list.
And it kind of gets it.
I would expect nothing less.
The only thing, the only question I have on there is, obviously, you or I are on the, on there because we were voted so by here. And also Linda Snow-Doxer and Elaine Webb from the school committee-
There are other members that are not listed, this is-
Are, are on the committee, but they were also, but they were voted by the school committee.
And then there's the town manager, or designated superintendent, or designated, so there's, and then the library trustees have an appointment.
Right.
So these are just your appointments, as a board.
Yeah. Has a motion been made and seconded? Any further discussion? All in favor? I'd like to thank Barry and Vanessa for getting this done. I think it's a great step forward, and I think you did a great job at filling out the field. Right, now, so, next week's, or next week's, the agenda, I want to, I want to give the board a chance to weigh in on agendas. I think that's just a good practice in general. And I've been trying to do it, we often run out of time. So as you can see, we have an executive session. You've all seen what's up here. I hesitate to ask, but I have to ask, is there anything that one of you would really like to see added to this agenda?
There's, Barry? There's one thing that I think would be a really nice thing to add to the agenda, and I don't necessarily think it may be an agenda item, as maybe part of maybe my liaison report, is that I've been in contact with the principals of Weston and Sampson, the engineering firm that's going into-
Yes.
The Curragh Building, basically taking over the entire Curragh Building.
Yes.
And they've offered to come and talk, you know, just to basically introduce themselves, say hello, and really talk about why they came to Redding.
Yeah.
And I think that that's a really great story-
Yeah.
-for a lot of people to hear. It would be five minutes, and it would, I think, be a nice, kind of, it doesn't have to be an agenda item as much as maybe part of my liaison, but I didn't want to just sort of just, I wanted to get the feedback from the board on that.
Yeah.
I hesitate to invite any private business to come speak before our board.
Why?
Well, in that regard, we have new businesses that move in all the time, we don't recognize any of that. I recognize that this was large, and that's great that they're taking up that space, but do we, where do we draw the line as far as which businesses are allowed to, or encouraged or invited to come to speak before us? Every small business that opens doesn't get that same courtesy. So, and is that a direction we want to go in?
I'd like to invite them all, actually, but I think this is a great-
They barely get through our businesses today. It's not, it's nothing against them, I think it's great that they're here, I just-
Can't start until-
Is that a good use of-
Dan, Dan, we need you.
Yes.
Sorry. So, just to recap, Barry introduced the idea of inviting in the principals from Weston and Sampson, because they're taking over a entire building that's been, the Curragh Building. And it would just be a five-minute presentation by Weston, or discussion with Weston and Sampson. Vanessa's objections, if you don't mind me summarizing here, are that, you know, we're singling out one business and, and, you know, not inviting in others, it sets a precedent.
And this is, we've never done anything like this.
It makes me nervous, but what do you think? And John?
I don't know, it's a little, they're tenants, right, they don't know the building.
They don't know the building, no.
Right.
But they're investing a lot of money in them.
They are, I'm not sure it's-
Is Redding Cooperative moving out of there?
No, they're just, they're just moving in, they're taking over the rest of the space.
Redding Cooperative has-
A floor.
What?
I think they have a floor.
Oh, no, they're two or three floors. They're big, they're, they're at least two. They're big. They're- they're at least two.
Yeah, they're bringing in two hundred.
It makes me...
Yeah, it's- it's a big move. I'm not making the moves small.
Yeah, I think I'd be a little uncomfortable.
Okay. All right. Dan, do you have anything that you'd like to add?
I do. Let's put appointments of the custodian of soldiers and sailors grave on there. That shouldn't take long.
Excellent.
I'm not sure...
If we can find some.
Well, there is a candidate Bill's been shopping around here.
Yes, but the candidate doesn't appear when we ask.
Does that have to be a VASK?
We're getting no feedback.
We don't have a provision in there to waive a VASK interview, to go straight to the board. I don't know. We can have that.
And do my- my- actually, I asked Bob about this. I said, if this is a person that we can't get ahold of or to respond to our inquiries, then if you're out there watching, please do contact us. We'd love to appoint you. But if we can't get ahold of them, do we wanna appoint someone for however many year term and not have them be responsive?
I'm saying just keep it as a placeholder in case we get some of that. It could be a five-minute interview.
All right.
And if they don't show...
You know, folks, let's use as much of our... Let's try to reach as many people as we can on this to fill this vacancy. I'd like to do that for all vacancies.
And I'd like to reiterate what Bill said, which is that they have to be a veteran, and they have to be a resident of Redding.
Right, yeah. So, spread the word.
You have the Redding Scholarship Foundation proclamation for the 26th.
Yes, we do.
Was that on your...
Yeah.
No.
We have it.
All right. We make that first item of business, even though we haven't passed the policy yet? Your meeting.
Andy, do you have your presence here?
Yes. So...
Just, there's- there's an item in Agenda in italics.
Yep.
The Board of Health has still not heard back from Town Council as of yesterday, today. They next meet the night before your next meeting, so if Kevin wanted to keep a placeholder on your agenda, I'd say it's tenuous at best.
Yeah, we're not gonna have time.
There's no room.
Just not gonna have room.
Well, that's part of where I'm going with this thing. I mean, there are a couple of things I'd like to talk about, but in deference to major issues that need to be settled, in my opinion, at the next meeting. I mean, we've got another report coming from, you know, Subcommittee of Dan and Andy on the evaluation and goal-setting process. That's coming, you know, next meeting. I'm really hopeful that we can just take the Board of Health and just have to let them know that that can't stay as a placeholder there.
The RMLD, I was having a sidebar with Bob, that might be postponable, too.
Well, they got a half hour.
Yeah.
I mean, I mean, if they're mission-critical because they gotta get the thing up, then that's a different story.
My understanding is she was asked to do a presentation by her board in the first quarter. Does this satisfy that? I don't know of any other real-time sensitive.
Well, when was that request made?
I don't know.
No, I'm saying, when was the request made to get on our agenda?
Within the last week.
Okay, so, so we wait for the last meeting of the quarter to jump on it. You know, I'm sorry, we've got other business here. I mean, I'm not- I don't wanna not get that report, but...
Well, and the reason I suggested it is because they are coming for a hearing, so it just made sense. I don't think that it's urgent that she give...
Well, if I'm willing to defer a couple of things that we need to talk about, then I, you know...
I think we need, Bob, we need to approve their requests. And I don't see any harm in delaying the presentation.
If you can bounce a couple of those things, if we- if we happen to wrap the other business up before our starting time of nine, which we can't start before, then we can go back and do the town manager evaluation, which isn't it time-fixed. That could be done any time.
Yes, that's true.
So we can fill in with that.
Yeah, Dan and I have a meeting...
That could be a start and stop.
Yeah.
I mean...
We have a couple of meetings, I think, before the next meeting.
Yeah.
So we're gonna try to push...
Will you try to get what you kinda did with this to us ahead of time so we can look at it?
Yes.
Yes.
It'll be in your packet.
Bob, Dan's already done a lot of work on this.
Okay.
So, which I- and then, and I apologize, but because of this work, I cannot make the FinCom meeting tomorrow night, the capital plan.
Well, that's plenty of going.
But it's posted, and, you know...
I'm not gonna be there.
Yeah, I think it's important. At least if you two go and give feedback from the board, that would be great.
Can I ask why we don't have a meeting between the election and town meeting? That's...
I was wondering the same thing.
Why is that?
It's a town manager break.
Yeah.
Also, to certify the election could take a while.
Yeah, last June, I thought the election was on the ninth. Something was published saying the ninth, so... I then said, okay, a couple of weeks after that, 'cause you wanna let the election be certified. And then in October, November, December, somewhere, I found out it was the second election meeting.
Can we schedule one or...
Well, you are meeting on the 11th, an executive session, and you can add an open session that night. So we'll be there, or any of you will be there.
Yeah.
I think there's- is there one of us who can't come?
No, I thought we were all there. It's probably you and I.
You're all. Well, this fellow.
Sorry.
I'm sorry. What's the- what's the date for that exec...
Well, it's a Thursday, I think.
The 11th. So that'll be after the election.
Right.
Correct.
The only issue with that would be is that if there's any kind of issue, that prolongs the certification of the election.
And where there were, you know, I mean, there's three seats and four candidates for the school committee, so they probably have a quorum, but yes, there is a slight chance. You don't wanna schedule stuff too close to an election, we learned.
Yeah.
Not by that way, but just the possibility.
But we can do it and then not do it.
So you can plan on an open session on the 11th, and it may or may not happen to discuss whatever you want to discuss. I've kinda made a mental note of that.
So you think the executive session will be sixty minutes?
I think it has to be, 'cause I believe the school committee meets at seven that night. This is a six o'clock meeting. It's upstairs above the Scatini Library, so don't worry if you wanna come.
Where will they meet if we decide to meet there in open session?
If you wanna meet an open session after, I'd suggest the same room you're going to be in for the executive session. The trouble is, I don't know that RCTV's gonna be able to cover it.
Why don't we just boot the school committee out of there?
Knock yourself out, you ask.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. It's a joke.
There's a lot of people coming. There's thirty-five people invited.
Oh, that's right. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Four boards, staff.
All right. The other thing is that it is in either the bylaws or the Charter that we're to publish a meeting schedule six months in advance. And, you know, I- I- there have been times when I've wanted to, you know, vary from that six-months course, and I have been spoken to by- by a couple of you and about changing these things, and I haven't. So...
I mean, I think part of it does, and we're also behind because we had snow day.
Yes, yeah.
You know, we're- and these policies, which I think are going to be time-consuming, aren't normal things on our agenda.
But our policy says we can call a meeting when we- the chair can call a meeting.
Yes, 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 we can. Well, what- let me ask the board. We can via email coordinate a meeting.
Sure.
An extra meeting. Yes, Bob?
Well, if you're going to discuss any of these hearings, you can't add that any date to the 26th. You just continue to the 26th. The other two are advertised for the 26th.
Okay, you're right. Good point.
So you wanna retake up this motion and continue to a different date. You better do that tonight.
We could reconsider it.
And the other two have already been published. You can't change those.
But we can do other business on the 11th. That's not either a hearing or...
But- but there's not- there's not much else. We've whittled it down. I mean, right now, we have the executive session, a very brief thing by Matt, I assume, half an hour?
Fifteen minutes, twenty minutes.
Fifteen minutes and...
So on the 26th, though, we can choose to continue it to the 11th, if...
You could choose to continue any of the three hearings to the 11th.
If we have anything else.
Which ones are we talking about? I'm sorry.
There's PTTF, there's RMLD, request for a new poll.
Okay.
They're not hearings.
Yes, they are. And then- and then there's a hearing...
Poll hearing is ten minutes.
Yeah, that's a short one.
Yeah. And then- and then there's a parking one. And then there's this one that we postpone.
Can I?
Yeah, John.
With all due respect, I mean, the burning question for me is, how mission-critical, from a timing standpoint, is the new telephone poll? Does it have to be done? I mean, I mean, if it has to be done, okay.
It's already been published.
Just don't tell me.
Or posted. I don't think that- the two other hearings there aren't optional.
Right. Which- so the PTT...
The PTT.
F, fine. We get that.
And the new poll. They've already been advertised. We gotta...
But you can open a hearing and continue it right away, but you wanna tell people in advance.
Yeah, and I'm not trying to just, you know, give them a bad time. I'm just trying to get the work done.
Yeah, I'm- if they want a new poll to go in, that can't be a long discussion. I'd just like to take care of it. And- and- and the PTTF, we need to do as well.
Is it fine for us to, you know, ask the RMLD general manager to, you know, come see us in...
We're already- I don't see why that would be a major problem, no. I think that's fine.
If that happens, we have a- we have a fighting chance to get going by, you know, eight, eight forty-five.
I mean, that's a ten-minute item. We're booting.
Yeah, everything's a ten-minute item that we boot, but you know what happens. They're never ten-minute items.
I think- I think RMLD was sort of low-hanging fruit.
Yeah.
Can I suggest we just leave it as is, and on the 26th, evaluate how we're doing and see if we wanna open it up on the 11th?
Well, that's not fair to the general manager of RMLD. I mean, either she's on or she's off.
Yeah, I- the other thing Bob has impressed upon me is that we need to respect people's employees' schedules, and if they're scheduled, if they're- if they plan to be at- in the- here in the evening at eight forty-five on that date, I'm reluctant to say, well, you can come on some- some other later date and you can take some other evening and come here.
Honestly, if you tell her tomorrow, that's two weeks' notice.
He's making a valid point, too.
Yeah, I- I'm reluctant. I'm very reluctant to do that, plus it's ten minutes.
Her report will be thirty minutes. She asked for thirty minutes.
There you go.
Poll hearing will be shorter.
It just grew from ten minutes to thirty minutes, and we haven't even started it yet.
It took us thirty minutes.
It is thirty minutes on me. Let me just ask the board.
Yeah, Bob.
The wild card on this to me is the PTTF stuff.